Meeting, uh, first portion of the meeting this evening is actually, um, our budget, uh, open meeting, open, open hearing. So we will start with, uh, a public hearing for our budget. Um, I do need to start off with, uh, invite, uh, any, uh, with our invitation to speak. Anyone here for invitation to speak on our budget? Seeing no one, we'll move on. Um, so we'll move over to, uh, we look for a vote on our FY two thousand and fifteen. Can't believe it's already that timeframe. Uh, budget, our budget number, our proposed budget number for this year, uh, for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen will be forty million nine hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars. This will require a vote, uh, so we do need to take a motion first. Take a motion from Mr. Walsh, second from, uh, Joe. All in favor? That motion is unanimous. We do accept the budget. Uh, so now we move, we move to, uh, closing of the public hearing for our budget and, uh, we'll take a motion to adjourn that piece of the meeting. Motion from Jen, second from Dawn, all in favor? Alright, and we will move over into our open meeting for our regular meeting here on the Milford School Committee for June fifth, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, first, uh, item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I trust all members have had an opportunity to review, review the minutes. Alright, and we'll take a motion from Joe, second from Dawn, all in favor? Motion passes. Uh, next piece would be announcements and correspondence. Any members have any announcements or correspondence? Uh, oh, go ahead.
It seems like such a long time ago, but, um, I just want to recognize each of our schools for their touching Memorial Day services. Um, the students did a great job honoring those who serve and those that have served and, um, especially those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. So, um, thanks to the, the students and the teachers for organizing those ceremonies. Um, I also wanted to recognize the, uh, high school baseball team and members of the National Honor Society that helped Brookside prepare for their ceremony by, uh, according to Lisa Firth, Firth and Paul Pellegrini, setting a record for spreading ten yards of mulch within an hour. Um, so thanks to them for, for doing that. Um, and also wanted to thank Land, Landscape People as well for donating the mulch.
Excellent, thank you. Dawn?
I, I just wanted to congratulate Kerry Bonak for running just a, a great senior week and graduation and, uh, it was a lot of fun. And, uh, it was, um, very well received by everybody and, and some amazing talent at the senior, uh, event. Um, I mean, the, i- it was just a great week for all the kids and, and it was extremely well run. And what a beautiful day it was for it too. So, just wanted to congratulate her and her staff for all the hard work that they put, did putting, uh, putting that show on as well as they did.
Um, the only other thing I would have is, uh, before I get to Bob.
Sure.
Um, actually, just in, in continuing on with that is certainly, uh, congratulating the class of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, it was a tremendous, uh, uh, senior week. It was always great to see, uh, all the awards and the scholarships and it still is just, uh, just fantastic to see all the great, um, opportunities that our graduates and our students are going on to. So, congratulations, class of two thousand and fourteen and, uh, you know, look forward to seeing some great things from you in the future as you, uh, move from current class to now alumni of Milford High School and welcome in the incoming senior class of now two thousand and fifteen. Who'll be joining in, uh, and that incoming class of freshmen will be the class of two thousand and eighteen, of which I have a, a member in the four walls of my house. So, be an interesting four years, um, but certainly congratulations to that class. Um, Bob, you have something?
I just wanted to acknowledge, um, the, the hard work teachers put in during, uh, during the, the week, Heritage Week. And I know, Joe, you had a chance to, uh, travel in a chaperone capacity. Uh, maybe you could just speak a little bit about the trip to Middles, to, uh, Washington DC, which I understand was, uh, was another great year.
Yeah, it was, it, it really was and, and some other attendees are here as well, Sue and, and Brianna, but it wa- it was really a, a, a great event. Um, you know, I, I, I give a lot of credit to Connie and, and her team. They, they do an amazing job organizing this trip every year and I know there's a lot of work that, that goes into it. Um, from all the, the upfront planning and the logistics, um, as well as planning out the itinerary and then preparing all the students for the, the trip. Uh, and everything went off without a, without a hitch. It, it, it's amazing. After twenty-five years, they've really got this down and what a great experience for the kids. It's a tremendous learning experience for them, but it's also a great bonding experience for, for all the students. And, um, everyone was extremely well behaved. We received a number of compliments regarding, uh, our students. So, um, you know, kudos to, to you and your classmates, Brianna.
That's right, and then, uh, back in, uh, Milford, uh, Heritage Week was equally, uh, exciting. I had a chance to participate, um, as a, as a, as a Board of Selectmen member, you know, sort of in my role, along with Senator Moore, who's sitting in, is a Board of Selectmen member as well. For, um, the Middle School East, some of the students there were having a, an experience of what a, open meeting is like, what town meeting is like. And they were debating, um, in this case, the future reuse of Middle School East. And they had ideas of, they would bring forward to the podium and they would share their ideas and it was very well done and gave students a, a real sense of what community government is like. And, uh, I had asked the town administrator to keep it, uh, keep the town hall set up from the last town meeting we had. So the kids could actually see the precinct signs and, and sit in those seats. So, I'd like to publicly thank, uh, you know, Rick Vilani and, and the team at the town hall for allowing that experience to be as rich as it was, so. It was a great week back at home too.
Excellent. Okay, any other members? Alright, we will move on. Uh, next item on the agenda is invitation to speak. Do we have anyone here for invitation to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. Uh, next is the town audit update. Uh, Bob, I think you're, I think we've got, um, uh, Lenny's, Lenny's here as well. So, Lenny, if you wanna come on up.
Yeah, I'll just begin this. I know it had come up at a past meeting about, and it was provided in your package. You saw the full auditor's report in there. I know some members had some questions in the past, so we thought tonight, and I know that Zach, um, Zach was, Taylor was intending to be here this evening. He apologized that he couldn't be here. I did just a little while ago send to the committee, I had a chance to open my email, uh, response from Zach. Um, so you probably hadn't had a chance to see that yet, but Kathy has briefed on that as well and she'll speak to that tonight for the committee as well. So there won't be anything that's in the email that you won't hear tonight. Um, so maybe I'll turn it over. You and Kathy speak to the audit piece. I know you weren't here at the, at the last meeting and then, Lenny, welcome. Thanks for, for coming out tonight as well.
If, if you okay with the chair, I'd like just to read what the auditor's, um, finding was. And then we'll speak to it.
Great.
The school department has sixteen revolving funds with a combined ending fund balance of nine hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and nine dollars at June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. Revolving funds are generally established for programs with expenses and revenues that vary with demand and are difficult to predict during the budget preparation process. It is reasonably expected that the fees charged will provide the resources necessary to pay for the services of the program. However, the fees charged should not produce a surplus balance greatly exceeding the expected immediate needs of the program. His recommendation was, we recommend that the school department review the reasonableness of the fee structure used in the revolving programs and validate that all reasonable program costs are charged to the revolving fund. So essentially, look at your fees and look at your expenses and make sure that you're charging them appropriately. So out of the sixteen, fifteen sit with us, the school committee, and one with Lenny, uh, under community use. Now, if you look at all of the, um, accounts that he's referencing in the first page that I provided in the, um, uh, material that was sent home, essentially, our school committee policy has always been that we raise the funds in this fiscal year for next year's budget, which speaks to his finding that it is difficult to, uh, prepare a, uh, budget timely. Therefore, I think our policy and our structure works very well. Uh, such as the, um, the, the balance in twelve compared to thirteen. If you look down, there is no growth, except there is slight growth in community use, which we'll speak to in a moment. Otherwise, such as something as the preschool where we do charge a fee. Well, we know the preschool and I'm just estimating probably costs us in the amount of maybe one point two million. Well, the hundred thousand dollars that remains in the account is simply just to offset a few teaching assistant salaries. We are not overfeeing the students in that program. And such is the same for the most part, when you, when you look down, there really is no growth. We have opened a couple new revolving accounts over the last two years, one being the field. And we are, um, for the lack of a better term, banking those funds to try to offset the future, um, replenish of the field in say ten years. So those funds are growing. However, as you know, our field charges, in our opinion, are what they should be. Um, as to the community use program, Lenny, if you'd like to speak to a few points.
I think everybody was given like a worksheet that, uh, from community use. And if you just look down, as, as Kathy said, as we have to replenish the field in a few years, you look down to the pool. Um, we acid wash the pool every three to four years. And we're getting to a point, you only can do that four or five times, then you have to replaster. So we've been trying to save up to, to replaster the pool. Um, is, you know, and this is monies that it comes over, as the town accountant said at, at the selectmen's meeting, over y- many years. So this is something, one of the projects, and there are others there, as you can see on that worksheet, that we will be able to hopefully take care of without having to come, either go in the town meeting or, or impact the budget for the school. So that's, that's exactly what we're trying to do, is save this money. You can see, as you look down, uh, the various programs, or the different things that we have done. Um, i- for instance, you know, the, we're gonna look into installing cameras into the gyms and into the pool area, okay? And that's something that I know that you, that this committee wants to do throughout the school and we're trying to offset it in places where we use it most.
And to the town accountant's point in your email, his exact words were, these funds are well managed with surplus balances for future improvements in program capital and expansion. I think we manage our funds very well. We have a solid fiscal policy. We collect our revenues in the current fiscal year for the following year's budget purpose. And that's how we stay solvent. And it has worked for us and I, I think it's fiscally responsible of us. And that's just my opinion, so it is what it is.
Hi Scott, I had a chance to reach out to-
Zach, the town accountant, he was on vacation. He called me the following Monday and, to be honest with you, he said that the auditor said that this is a good problem to have. He said the town of Milford is ve- you know, very unique. He said community use is an outstandingly run program. He said it's just that you're surplusing money, but he said Lenny had a plan already in place to spend the account down. He basically said, let's just keep an eye on him. He says, but, he said, I'm, I go into towns where I have the exact opposite problem. The funds aren't being managed properly and there are no funds. He said, so you've got a good problem. He says it just, you know, tighten up a little bit. He says, all you have to do, he said, but, he said the same thing to me. He said, the auditor said that everything was really tip top.
And as we all know, uh, community use is constantly building new programs. We've taken on the travel basketball, new, uh, what do we call it, a fleet, Lenny, of kayaks?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, for, uh, community use program.
For the pool? You can use them down Louisiana Lake.
Yeah.
For our summer camp. And, um, yes, we're always trying to expand and look at new things. Uh, actually, Dr. Tremblay and I had a conversation last week about a possible new, new programs for the fall, some enrichment programs that, you know, he would like to, even part of his initiative, so that's something that we're gonna be discussing this summer. Um, and then as far as the fee structure, I also showed you, you know, that we are unique, as the town of Milford is unique in this community use. There aren't too many surrounding towns that have what we have. But the fees that we do charge for, isn't, for instance, our adult ed, our swim lessons, the things are well below the average, uh, area.
That was gonna be my, one of my questions was, and I, my understanding is, is our fees of, our fee structure has always been well below certainly area and regional average. Are we still, I'm, I'm assuming we are still in that same spot?
We are.
Good. I know when it was first brought before me and, and I first brought it before the committee a couple weeks ago and, and first and foremost, thank you, Lenny, for coming. And thank you Kathy for the update. Um, it was brought to me as a concern of, hey, there was an audit finding and it was around this. So I appreciate you guys spending the time that I knew you would, um, and I knew you had of just helping to help educate both myself and the committee and, as well as bringing that light to the community. Um, so that we are understanding that, yeah, it's a great problem to have. And I've had an opportunity to connect with the town accountant's office as well and, um, you know, it's a great problem to have. And it's, and it's, kudos to each of us and, and each, uh, each of you, I mean, of how well-run it is and the fact that it's not, uh, while we're paying, we're raising our money this year for the bills we owed last year. And that's not where anybody wants to be and unfortunately, that's where a lot of communities are. So, uh, thank you guys and, and continued great work on that. Any other members have any comments or questions? Alright, perfect.
Tremblay, I just wanted to thank you publicly also, Lenny, to thank you, you know, all the work you do managing the transportation for the school districts as well as the community school use program. And we don't often have an opportunity to have you sit in front of us and for me to say that on camera, uh, in front of the school committee, but, um, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Lenny. Excellent, thank you, Lenny. Alright, we'll move on to our next, uh, component, which is the School Improvement Plan and Parent Teacher Handbook for Stacy Middle School and Middle School East. So, we've got a, got a whole host of folks here tonight. Absolutely, not at all.
Awful lot of books you got there.
I didn't bring them all either.
Good evening.
Good evening. With their fancy binder, I think it's a reference.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you guys for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having us and, um, the thing that's just coming around now is something that we put together for Stacy Middle School. It was kind of a collaborative effort between students as well as the teachers, kind of fifty fabulous things that are going on. Uh, this is something we started quite a while ago, I don't know, probably in January or something, so this is the final product of it. So I just wanted to share it with you, just got finalized at the beginning of this week, okay? So it's just something, you can tuck it away and look at it later if you'd like. Do you have any preference on what you would like us to start with?
Um, why don't you start with, uh, it doesn't really matter, I guess, start with, why don't you start with the, uh, the Parent Teacher Handbook?
Okay, okay. Um, so within the handbook, you can see there's two, so we'll start with Stacy Middle School. Each within your, um, the documents that were mailed to you, they have a changed page. And the page has the, um, it has the page number, the heading, changes from, changes to, to make it a little bit easier for you to follow, okay? Um, probably the key things that we had changed within both handbooks is, uh, Middle School East, we tried to mirror more of the structure as we have it at Stacy Middle School to make it a little bit of an easier transition when students go from Stacy Middle School to Middle School East. I have to commend the students, it's Brianna Brazza and Nathan Yon. They're, um, here representing Middle School East, but also sit on the M- Middle School Council and they're student council president and vice president. So that's why they're here today, okay? They did a lot of, uh, looking over the handbooks to, to kind of see it from a student perspective and give us input on, do we, do you think it's visual? Do you think students can find what they need in there? So they were very, very nice about doing that. Uh, so if you have questions about any student-related activity, um, that would be fine, they'd be able to, to answer that for you this evening. Um, so we did try to match and mirror a little bit more. Probably the biggest thing that we did within the handbook is try to update, uh, with the new discipline regulations that have come out. Uh, so if you look in your document, you'll see that there's a highlight that's still in the discipline section. And I do wanna point that out to you, that we're still asking for a little bit of flexibility with that. We are working, uh, with central office as well as the special ed director, trying to understand that new law. We spent quite a few hours, uh, Friday reviewing it with a lawyer. So Friday night, we're trying to upload it into the handbooks for you, so you could have a, an overview of what we're trying to do as a team. Um, there is something in there I do wanna point out, it's called ISS, which is in-school suspension. We do not have that at the middle school level and we are trying to work to see if there's a feasibility for us to have that in the fall. So I do ask for your flexibility, if we're not able to accomplish that financially this year, that we would just pull that part of, um, of that component out of that new regulation. So that's why I left it highlighted in the handbook for you guys to see. Other than that, we did a little bit of realigning, right, kids, just to make sure that it, it's a little bit easier to read. Um, maybe highlight the photo opportunity component a little bit better so s- parents can understand. Oftentimes, there's so many documents we as parents have to sign that sometimes you just keep signing all the way down. Uh, so we tried to highlight that, only sign this if you don't want your child photographed, so we, we made that section a little bit clearer. Um, other than that, it's pretty much the same thing. We did a little bit more, um, talking about the transition from middle school to high school. Another thing that I, while, while she's here, I would like to commend her, my administrative assistants over at Stacy Middle School is also, sits on the council and she's really done a lot of work realigning the handbook and she got fancy pants on us. And on the table of contents, if you go on the website and you just click on the page, it automatically takes you to the section in the handbook. So it makes it much easier for parents. And I would like to commend Mrs. Now for figuring out how to do that, because I think that's probably gonna save parents a lot of time and more importantly, headaches trying to find things within the handbook. So, I just wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, commend her for that. And visually, I have all these ideas and then she takes them and puts them in nice format. So, I do wanna give her kudos for that effort. Um, the other big component in the middle school handbook that I did want to talk to you a little bit about to make you aware of is the middle school athletic policy and procedures. There's a component of that within the handbook. There's one piece, um, on, in both of the handmer- handbooks, Middle School East and Stacy Middle School, where based on the subcommittee and obviously your committee's recommendations regarding academic eligibility, we would change that, what's in here currently, it says must be passing all coursework, to whatever the recommendation is from the committee once they finally, once there's the final decision. So I do ask for flexibility, when that decision is made, that I could just change. It's on page thirty-one in one handbook, I think that's the Middle East handbook. Um, and then on page thirty-three in the Stacy handbook. So if I could just change that little sentence, once the committee makes that final determination. I believe there's a, a, a different recommendation on what was in here, but this was done quite a long time ago before we got to that with the committee. Does, does anyone have any questions on that, or?
Yeah, we, we were gonna touch on that a little bit later in the, the, the agenda, but, um, now's probably a good time as, as Annie. But the, the committee did review, um, the middle level, uh, the MIA rulebook for middle level sports, uh, on, on Monday. Um, and their minimum eligibility, academic eligibility requirement is that you have to pass four out of five major subjects, um, which represents about eighty percent of the, the course load. Um, so we're looking to adopt the MIA handbook for middle level sports with some changes. So an example would be, we would incorporate our existing concussion policy into the handbook. We did take the language from our existing insurance policy and move that into the handbook as well. Um, and then there's, you know, we'll get some discussion about the high school level and the academic eligibility requirements there. Um, so m- more to come on that piece, but whatever we end up deciding, to, to Nancy's point, she'll incorporate into the hand, the student handbook.
And then, um, does anyone have any questions about the handbooks for the students? They did a lot on, on just reviewing. Does anyone have anything?
Anybody have any questions?
No, the, the only other thing, sorry, um, the, the only thing to point out is that, um, y- y- you'll find that they have their own cellphone policy in, in the handbook. So the middle school policy is essentially no cellphones, you keep them in your lockers during the day. Um, and we had talked about creating a district-wide policy. I think the approach that, um, we're gonna take is that each school would, would determine their own policy. So their policy will be in the handbook, no cellphones, stays in locker. Uh, next week Carrie's gonna present her handbook, um, and Carrie's been working very closely with, uh, a committee that's comprised of students and teachers and they've created their own policy for the high school that she'll be reviewing with us next, at the next school committee meeting.
Okay, so I know we're kinda mixing some things together, I know with, uh, so the cellphone policy, obviously, you, um, you'll have a recommendation, the policy subcommittee will have a recommendation for the full board to vote on.
Well, sorry, so it's not gonna be a, a district-wide policy. I think what we decide, what we, what we discussed was having each school-
Right, so just as a reminder for a subcommittee, you'd make a recommendation, it's the full board's vote.
Okay.
So you'd make a recommendation that you wanna maintain it at the school level and that's, that's okay. That's, that's within your purview as a subcommittee. Ultimately, it would be the vote of the seven members of, or the majority to make the decision. It's a, it's a full board decision. Subcommittee is make, is recommendation only. So your recommendation is, your recommendation as a subcommittee is that you wanna leave it in the school's hands. And, and that's okay, that's, that's fine. I just wanna make sure we're kind of on the same page of, if that's the recommendation, then it will be up to the, to the committee to debate and then ultimately make a decision on.
Okay.
Um, so, I just, so we're kind of on the same page on that, so, which is fine. So, for the purposes of the handbook, which is obviously where we wanna kinda get back to, um, does any members have any questions for the students or for Nancy with regards to the handbook? Dawn?
Just, uh, one comment. Uh, I'm real happy to hear that you've put in the in-house suspensions, 'cause I think that's really important, especially today. Um, h- how is that staffed?
Well, that, that's why I, I have it still highlighted, um, Dawn. The, the issue is whether or not we're going to be able to fund that. Um, so the idea is looking to, to work with central office and the special ed director to see if we can make that a doable thing. If we can't for this fall, then I would put it into the budget cycle for the following year. Um, the issue would become, yes, staffing and then also space on where we would do that. And to develop a program overview, so we would be able to make sure that students who are in that situation where they made a poor decision and resulted in a, a short-term suspension. If we could keep it as an in-house thing, we need to create and find a program where they would still be able to make academic progress. That's one of the biggest things with the new law is, i- if someone makes a poor choice, how can we still make sure they continue to make academic progress so they don't fall behind in their studies?
Just a, a comment on that, we, we may have some ways around that, working with our attorney. So they've added thirty-seven H, thirty-seven H and a half, we've had in place with those felonies and things and, and so students can still be suspended if there's a felony. Thirty-seven H and three quarters now is sort of, I guess, the bad choice clause. Where if a student does something that's, you know, not a, something that you'd think of as egregious, they need to be out of the class though. They can't be going home any longer. They've gotta be in school, which is, I agree, it's, it, they should, they're better served in school. Uh, one loophole potentially to help us with this one may be that, and I think it's actually good, is that like our transitions program at the high school, if the student needed to be out of class for three or four periods, wouldn't constitute the entire day, maybe they could then go back into their classroom. That would, that wouldn't meet the threshold of being a suspension. It would still be disciplinary and it wouldn't require us to staff something. Um, uh, we would still, rather, it would still require us to staff something, but it wouldn't be called a suspension. So this, the way it's sort of run, the legal ease of it, we're working through those kinks right now, as is every district, 'cause July one, this is in place. We have to have this, um, something like that in place and the middle schools and, and high schools are particularly are struggling with that. So we're working through it together. So I would, I would recommend that when the committee does finally take this to a vote, that they vote the handbook conditionally with the disciplinary section to be compliant with the statutory language.
Fair enough.
Yes, real quick, just, did I understand you said you have it in one school presently, but not in the other?
The, in ISS room? No, we don't have it in the middle level room, uh, in the middle schools anywhere.
Schools at all, right now?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Um, do you guys have anything you'd like to share that, what you, you worked on, or?
Yeah, I was gonna, I, I did have a couple of questions for you.
Okay, good, good.
So I just wanna toss it out to the members first.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other members have any questions? Alright, um, so thank you both for joining. Um, so I do have a couple of questions for the two of you. So what were, what were some of the things that, that, uh, that you thought, what, any recommendations that you guys had as a result of this for changes? And that you guys recommended on that?
Uh, we had a few concerns like about the dress code policy and like how flexible that it could be, 'cause-
You wanted suits and jackets?
What?
You wanted suits and jackets?
Yeah. Um, 'cause like, sometimes like we don't understand, like, I don't think like at our age, like we understand like why we can't wear some stuff to school. More pertaining to the girls, I think it's more concerned for Brianna, right, for representing like from like the girls. Like why, like, some like the stuff is the way that is and that was explained to us, so, but that was like one of like the ideas that we kinda had.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Yon. Ms. Brazza, anything to add?
Um, I don't really have anything, just like what Nathan is, like, we kinda like wanted to know like more about the dress code because like, I mean, we don't fully understand like why sometimes we can't wear like razorbacks or something like that, like the tank top to school, but it's explained to us.
So do you think that you're-
Those eyes were directed at me.
And if you've got a full understanding of it, I'll invite you to my house over the weekend and you can explain to my eighth grader. So do you have, uh, is the dress code something that comes up a lot as among, amongst the students? I know it comes up a lot, I'm sure, at the house. Um, does it come up a lot amongst your stu- amongst your peers? And do you feel that they now have a, that the way it's written, it's clear enough for everybody to understand?
I think it definitely does, like it definitely is like among conversation at school. And I think now how the handbook is written a better, um, explains why everything it is like the way it is and it better goes into like, it goes into better explanation of why we can't wear some certain clothing to school. So I think it does help.
Well, I would think it'd be more of an issue in the fall and the spring than it is in the winter.
Yeah.
Like right now, it's probably hot cafeteria conversation.
Yeah.
Yes, certainly a seasonal conversation.
Yes, exactly.
Um, is there, I'd, I'd, I'd love to hear your recommendations, if you have any recommendations on any, on any ways that we could help make it clearer for, for your peers? And for more for, not so much your group, 'cause you guys are going to high school in about nine days. Um, and you have a whole different dress codes you're gonna work with. Um, how about for the groups that are behind you and how we can help the the students that you're kinda blazing the path for to make it easier for them?
Well, I think like assemblies always help, like, but maybe try to make the assemblies more interactive and trying to keep like the students interested maybe. 'Cause like I know we always have like the beginning of like the year assembly where it's like always like the dress code, like the rules and all that. And it's probably not one of like the most fun um, assemblies of the year, but probably like the most informational. So maybe we can like incorporate like a more interesting way to bring across that information. I think that may um, help like educate why we cannot wear certain clothing aggressively.
You know, we might be able to do is if you do have an assembly like that in the beginning of the year, maybe a school committee member could go down and and be there and.
Dress how.
Dress how Joe dresses.
Don't dress how Joe dresses.
And, you know, you can ask questions. The school committee member will try to explain it.
Yeah, and I think that would, if that would be helpful, I would tell you, um, I I wish I could tell you the dress codes get easier to explain. I can tell you in my, in my, in my, in my other life, my actual, in my full-time job, um, I spend a good amount of time, I probably go through a dress dress code policy review with my team, probably about six times a year, and these are adults who have full-time jobs. One thing that we did have and I'll I'll certainly share this with you Nancy and and take it for what you, uh, what you will. One thing we actually did with our employees, especially for the new hires, we actually do a semi-annual fashion show. And what we do is is we have people come in dressed in the way that we feel that is appropriate and actually meet our dress code guidelines. So you may wanna think about maybe with some student council members of the, hey, this is what's appropriate to wear? Something along those lines. Would that be, that may be more interesting as well than having some adults stand there in a suit.
We do have, I think we have pictures up on the webs uh, with dress code, or we had it passed out where do and don't visuals as well. But we maybe we can have them come back, these two, and do the the um, fashion show for us in the fall.
I think I just signed you up for more work. I apologize in advance for that. Your parents can call me later and tell me that I shouldn't have done that, so. Thank you, guys. Any other members have any questions or comments for these two?
I was just thinking as the parent of a fifth grader, she's very well aware of what the dress code is and she knows there are certain things that can be worn on the weekend and she's actually, um, to my chagrin, already had her shirt checked once. Um, but you know what, that's okay, because that's what you should be doing and um, the kids are thinking about what what they need to wear. So whatever you're doing to explain, I do think it's it's making an impact at the youngest level, which hopefully will follow them through the years.
They start to test it a little more when they hit eighth grade.
Sure they do.
Excellent. Well, thank you for, uh, thank you both. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, thank you guys for coming this evening. I know it's not always, uh, no, it's not always easy. But I appreciate all the work that you guys put in also for coming and spending some time with us.
As leaders in the making, right here, for sure, for sure.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, so if we want to, uh, we do require a separate vote for this one, so we can take a motion from Joe, second from Jen, um, to pass with the exclusion um, of the items that Nancy aforementioned. So the disciplinary policy with regards to the uh, the in-house, the cellphone policy and as well as the uh, the middle school athletics eligibility program, um, with the exclusion of those that we will, we will revisit later on. So all all those in favor? So your uh, your parent teacher handbook does pass, so thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you. Can I make one more comment? Because you mentioned assemblies and I was able to attend the Memorial Day assembly and I do have to say, the behavior of the students in that school was remarkable.
Thank you.
And I know you got up and mentioned a few words and it sounded like you had already made an announcement before the program began, but the way the students conducted themselves, so whatever is in that handbook in terms of expectations, uh, it seems like it's it's trickling down and kids are really understanding um, the importance of the events that you're holding and the way they should be conducting themselves. It was really impressive.
Thank you, thank you.
There was a lot of middle middle schoolers in a gym on a hot day.
Almost a thousand.
Yeah.
Um, I do wanna say that not only is it the handbook, but it's the teachers who enforce the handbook. They ought to work as a team to make sure the students understand the seriousness of um, respecting a a ceremony like that. So kudos to the teachers as well.
Excellent. Alright, so do you wanna move on to your improvement point?
Sure, I would love to. Thank you. Um, within the the handbook for the Milford Middle Schools, what we tried to do as a team is really kind of condense and think about what is it that the have-tos. Um, there's a lot of initiatives that are going on that we need to do as a, as a team to make sure we continue to make growth academically and socially for students. So uh, the school council really did a lot of talking and discussing about how can we, how can we get things done without continually overloading people, but still being able to move forward and make effective progress? So you'll see some reoccurring themes that were in there from last year, just because I think it's really important to leave certain things in there to make sure they're embedded in the culture before you remove them. Um, some of the key things, when you start talking about state assessments, we continue to do the same things, whether it's going to be MCAS or PARK. We're still going to do the same type of analysis, we're still gonna do the same types of um, item analysis and planning based on the data to make sure we do in uh, interventions, whether it's enrichments or interventions depending on where our student falls academically within that state testing uh, outcome. So those things you'll see as a reoccurring theme. Um, some of the other things I want to talk to you about and I I mean, Dr. McIntyre has talked about them. I was here at last meeting and I heard him mentioning things about the district determined measures. So is that something that all educators have to have and we have to have at least two? So um, that's why we have that embedded in here to guideline, create a nice guideline for teachers, making sure they have them established. So we're, they're all going to have a a starting point on that that data, so that's going to be important, so that's why that's in there. Um, also, within that section on page eight, we talk a lot about the district initiative, which is response to intervention. And we continue to streamline that process. Uh, I am very pleased to say that through the observations and and we probably did as a team, probably did, I have the number, hang on. Um, about three hundred and thirteen observations as a a middle school team. I would say probably ninety-eight percent of the time I saw a target objective, which is an ICANN statement for the students to reference during the the lesson, were posted. And usually there's a formative assessment at the end of the lesson that links right back to that target objective. So some of the things that are in here, they're happening, but I think they're so important and poignant enough with the RTI initiative that we keep them in there to keep reinforcing the importance of that. That's what helps drive us towards growth and also keeps us focused as a team to make sure we're doing what the the Common Core tells us we need to do, okay? Um, we also have the PBIS initiative, which is continuing. The the push with Common Core and literacy is is something that we're really taking quite seriously at the middle level. Our reading and ELA teachers are doing an outstanding job, uh, making sure they get baseline reading scores in the fall. So they're doing the pre and post on all of that and gathering students' literacy skills. Um, so we're continuing to use that data to inform how we intervene in in the sense of, does anyone need extra support with uh, reading and literacy? So that's something else we're focusing on. Um, probably one of the bigger things too is all content area teachers, whether it's uh, health, PE, art, computers, English. We're all making sure that we're supporting literacy as is mandated by the Common Core, so that also has been built in here. I would like to commend the the efforts of the social studies department as well as ELA and our enrichment teacher for really moving forward on the Big Six research project. Uh, that starts at grade five and goes through grade eight, so there's different components of it, getting students used to doing research and writing uh, based on the research that they find, so that also is happening. Um, lastly, when we start talking about the Common Core and developing, it's called universal design of learning that's very much aligned with the DESE's model curriculum units. Um, so there's a component in here about developing one or more essential questions for each unit to kind of guide that kind of rigor that you need to have within the Common Core and to to meet, whether it's state, whatever state assessment gets chosen by our district, that kind of overarching question is going to make sure our students are getting the rigorous kind of critical thinking skills they need to 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 move forward and and do well. Um, so that's embedded in here as well. So once we know if this is approved or not, uh, we have a planned meeting, uh, meeting me and the curriculum team leaders across the middle to start talking about a possible professional practice goal for for school base, so we all can support maybe the same thing moving on one of these items to keep it real focused and tight as a team.
And Dr. McIntyre, I'm I'm assuming you're part of those conversations as well?
Absolutely.
So I figured, okay. Alright, any members have any questions with regards to the school improvement plan?
Can I say one more thing else? I forgot, sorry.
Of course, yeah.
Um, I'll give you the rank, 'cause you guys know I'll talk all night about it. But uh, I also wanted to commend the NEASC team. Um, can you believe it already? We're at the five-year mark from having to do a five-year accreditation report. So that report is just about finalized. The due date is September first, so we will be getting that in on time. Uh, so I would like to commend Ryan McHale and Christian Bosh, they're kind of the co-chairs who are leading that and there's another group of people behind them. Um, and lastly, um, we're gonna do our very, very best within this improvement plan as we move forward to the merge, making sure that we communicate everything that's going on to the family, so they have a good understanding of what's going to happen. So that also is embedded in here. Thanks to Jenny Jen, who was on the council before she got elected to yours, so thank you for that as well. And and of course, professional development, depending on whether you go the MCAS or the PARK. If we do go with PARK, there are PARK um, components that we can view video-based for professional development for teachers. So that's built in here as well as, uh, we're talking about building kind of like a sharing carousel of ideas within um, our own school community. We have a lot of brilliant people on staff and if everyone could to share their expertise, that would be quite a heck of a professional development day. So that's something we're starting to toss around as well. And that's that and a hat, that's all of it, okay?
Thank you. Alright, um, any members have any for, any questions? Alright, so we do need a motion. Take a motion from Mike, second from Joey. All in favor? Alright, and the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. So uh, you are fully adopted. Thank you Nancy and thank you to both of you for coming and joining tonight. Nice job tonight.
Thanks so much.
Great job. Nancy, before you go, just wanted to um, also publicly thank you for the tremendous work over the last two years, in particular that you've done uh, to two schools, both Stacy School, Middle School East. The work you did is obvious in the school improvement plan to merge those two and you're really prepar- paved the way well for the transition when Woodland School uh, takes grade five and when eighth grade comes to Stacy. And I just wanted to thank you for the tremendous work you've done over the last couple of years and 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 having the responsibility of those two schools. A tremendous challenge. You've taken it on extraordinarily well and have done some just some great work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy.
You know what I'm gonna say, that's 'cause we have great teachers in those buildings. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll move forward on to the next agenda item, which is Milford Public Schools uh, policy readings. So we've got the first reading for KF dash two, which is the athletic complex, uh, complex usage. I don't know who wants to, who's got it that wants to read it off for us.
Yes, so um, well, so to your, to your point, we we've updated two policies to present to the the committee today.
Okay.
The athletic complex usage and the informational uh, school communication program. What I thought we would do is start with the um, the informational communication program first, if that's okay, and and have Bob give us an update on some of the changes that were made to that policy and then we can start having the discussion about the athletic.
Okay, you wanna just review the the red lines on it?
Yeah, sure. Uh, so you, I'm, so I'm on looking at policy KDA. This is the uh, mass communication use policy. And you should have that in your packet.
Nope, we'd talk, we'd start with uh, KF two.
Do you wanna? I'm sorry.
We can start wherever you want, but.
You want me to talk about the athletic?
Uh, do we have the, the red line version athletic?
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet.
We do. I'm I'm I missed that just.
We should, that was in our packet. We can go to KDA, we've got mask, we've got them both, so whichever one you wanna start with, we'd started talking about the athletic.
Yeah, let me do the, if if we can, the KDA doesn't throw us off too far, just because it's really very simple changes. We, uh, I think I might have mentioned this at a previous meeting, um, the Alert Now system was purchased by Blackboard. So Blackboard owns Alert Now, so the the Alert Now policy is just, is just now more, has a larger shelf, longer shelf life by being called a mass communication use policy as opposed to the Alert Now policy. That's all there are for changes in this and that's just throughout the document that have been redlined.
Okay, so with that one, so that's uh, that's um, appendix B here. First, this is the first reading file of the KDA public information, um, school communication program. So that's, that one really is just a name change only.
It it's all it is. Yeah, there's really, it's a couple of grammatical things.
I don't see unless the committee um, favors another way that we do more, multiple readings on this. We can do a, uh, we can certainly take a motion and a vote on that one to adopt this evening. Okay, so I take a motion. Motion from Joey, second from Jen, all in favor. Motion passes. Alright, so we can move on now. Move on from that one.
Alright, so the next one's the athletic complex usage and this one may need, may require multiple readings. Right, um, so I I I think the version I have is the one that was in the, in the packet that was emailed out. And Bob, there wasn't a second version that was prepared for tonight, right?
No, there there is not a second version in there. We should have some discussion though about maybe what the next version will include.
Okay.
And Kathy, you might have some more latest information that I didn't have from your conversation with Melissa today, so might defer to you on this as well.
Okay, so we'll start with what was in the, in your packet, um, and it was a red line version. Uh, the first thing that was was changed under important dates, application submissions. Um, we we defined each period, so for the spring session, you'll notice that in red, we added March first to June fifteenth. And then in order to reserve the fields for that period, you have to submit the application between February first and February fifteenth. Um, the summer session's June fifteenth to August fifteenth, you have to submit the application by May thirtieth. Um, this is one area that we may may need to make a a subsequent change in the fall. The dates are August fifteenth to November fifteenth, but if you notice, the application submission date is August fifteenth as well, the deadline, whereas the other deadlines are fifteen days before, so I think we just need to make a slight change there to August first, so that's consistent with the other periods.
I do have a quick question on that, so on a couple of things. So the, with regards to the the usage here, does that fall in line with the this, the uh, sports calendars from the different groups that use that, given the timeframes here? I guess I'm not sure what the dates that are on here are for. So for instance, I know, for instance, football is generally over before November fifteenth. It is not over by November fifteenth, it doesn't end till Thanksgiving, um, in some cases, so I wasn't sure if there was.
It it really is just giving a period for open enrollment, uh, in defining the period. So in other words, if the fields were clear and somebody wanted to use them November thirtieth, they certainly could put in a permit. We were just trying to define what the season would resemble.
So these are outside venues, not school, the school usage is already laid out in a calendar.
This, these dates here, the February first, the February fifteenth is for um, Milford.
Right, but what I'm, and what I'm saying Kathy is it's for people that are gonna request permission to use the field if that date was open.
Absolutely.
So example, if there's a football game on a Friday night, that person's request would be denied.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
They still have first usage. So the dates here, that, is that the proposed season timeline?
Yes.
Is March first to June fifteenth?
Correct.
Okay, and then the first through the fifteenth is the op- application window, so for enrollment period, so to speak, for um, outside Milford, for non-Milford groups, is that correct?
Correct.
So just that's my, so that's my only question, is is that are the dates of sort of the season, uh, this, the seasoned, the season timeframes on here, are they in line with and did you connect, did you connect with the groups that have used this, have used our complex historically that these are in line with their dates? As an example, the fall one, I know November fifteenth is generally before Thanksgiving and I know that sometimes at Thanksgiving, by Thanksgiving, there's still some football games going on, so. I just didn't know if you guys had had an opportunity to connect with the different uses, the groups that use it.
Well, I can speak to um, the submission deadline dates worked very well.
Yeah.
And reflecting from when they were um, asking to use the field is basically how we developed the season definition. So I do think they will work well. If we have to bring it back for another reading after we go live with this, you know, I'll keep notes, but this was something that, um, you know, spring was so vague, what defines spring? So we we tried to find dates that would really work, but it, you know, I can bring it back if in fact they're not working.
I I just didn't know, I know some of the, some of the groups, um, they read this to the, to the, to the point of being literal. So if they look at it and go, oh no, well my, my spring calendar, my last lacrosse game is on the sixteenth of June, now what do I do? Do I have to file again for the summer session? Do I have to refile an application and I just?
They would.
Okay, and that's just, and that may be the case? I just, I I just wasn't sure if that was what the desire was. I don't think it's a big issue, just going on.
So Kathy, just want, so you're saying this used to read fall, winter, spring?
Right.
Yes. We just didn't specify the dates on it before for start management.
Very vague.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think it does that.
I was just trying to ask if there'd be a problem with just changing November fifteenth to November thirtieth?
I'm just, I, it was just an exam. I'm just, I, it was just an example. I don't know. I, I, I think we can, I mean, we can still change whatever we, whatever we want.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a reason why it, because I agree that football, it, it always is going to go after that. So if, if it wasn't a reason you had to stick with the fifteenth, you could just change that and alleviate that problem.
We even had applications into December, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I'm sure. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I guess that would be my, my, my only ask, cause the committee member would be that we coordinate with the groups that have used this in the past, just to make sure that it aligns, um, with their sports, with their athletic seasons. Um, both the, the start and end dates, cause they're kinda, so that way we're not limiting them, or asking them to reapply mid-season. But, I'm sorry, Joe, is there, any other, uh, red lines on here?
The other red line was on page two or four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that was under, um, there's a section that lists out all the, um, all the items that are not permitted on this synthetic grass field, and we added softball and baseball uses prohibited. So there was, um, some, some issues where, uh, kids were going out on the, the turf field and hitting a baseball around, hitting a softball around, and that, you know, that was obviously, um, was creating a danger. So we added that language there to, um, prevent that from, from happening going forward. Um, so those are the, the, the two red i, red line items that we have for the committee today. In addition to that, we've had some discussion, um, regarding the use of the bathrooms in the, the new facility that was built. Um, so the thought process there, uh, if you turn to page three of four, where we list out the, um, hourly fees for the, the field usage, um, you'll notice that there's a site manager that gets paid fifteen dollars an hour, um, for Milford Adult Organizations and for other groups. Um, so the thought process there is to have the site manager be responsible for general upkeep during the, the event. So, um, you know, they'd be going, they'd be picking up and restocking, uh, the bathroom space as part of their responsibilities. So we'd be revising the site manager checklist to include the, the restrooms. Um, and then for the Milford Youth Organizations, um, we would give them the option. So they, they would have the option to ensure that those bathrooms are picked up and cleaned, um, and, or leverage the site manager if they choose to and pay the fifteen dollars an hour. Um, so that's just a conversation that we're exploring right now, that will eventually, um, need to present to the committee at a future reading. And then the, um, the Parks Department would still be responsible for going around and, and emptying out the trash and picking up the trash for us.
Yeah. Any members have any questions?
I have, uh, two things. One, regarding the bathrooms, it's not even functioning right now, right? Um, I talked to Richie the other day, because I, I received a couple of complaints. And the only complaint I got about the entire graduation was that the bathrooms were locked. And, uh, you know, for those, well, we were all there. I mean, we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of people at that, um, you know, at that event without functioning bathrooms. And, and, uh, and talking to Richie, I guess there were a couple porta potties set down at the end. Uh, but if you didn't know about them, you know, it was a, it was a tough, tough afternoon for a lot of people. So, um, a- anyway, he, he did explain to me that it is being, uh, part of the renovation process, so the concession stands. Hopefully, that'll be resolved before the new season starts. The other thing that I'd like to ask is, uh, around the dollar, the fee structure. And, and for the new members, we spent an awful lot of time talking about whether or not we were gonna have fees, whether the fees would cover this. And we all agreed at the end of the day, to give it a one-year period. To let's, let's just try it at this twenty-five. Let's see if we needed additional funds, uh, and that we would address that. Now, I don't know if, because we're not being asked to address that, if it's okay or not. But I, I, I didn't know if, when you do present this in the final draft, if you could take that into consideration and give us a report as to how much fee, you know, what were the revenues, what were the expenses, and whether or not we feel that the twenty-five dollar fee is appropriate or not. Because again, we invested a ton of time on this, and the whole thing was to pay, you know, to Lenny's point, and the, and the, everything that we talked about so far is about making sure that we have the funds and the fees available to replenish that field when it comes time, you know, at the end of the ten years. So, um, i- if you could really look into that, and if it has to be adjusted, uh, please make that recommendation.
Yeah, both for, I, I think, just the overall fee scheduling for, for the, for the new members, uh, just to give you some context on it. Uh, the field was, the, the field complex was built as a community field. Um, and as a result, there was a lot of conversation and, and, and context around, should there be any cost? Should the cost be twenty-five dollars? Should the cost be nothing? Should the cost be thirty dollars or sixty dollars? Um, as you go through and kind of evaluate those, as Dawn is asking, um, and, and I would ask the same thing of, what you will find is, as compared to like complexes, we are substantially on the low end. Um, other towns in the area, you're talking seventy-five, a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, and we're at twenty-five. Um, I, I, I would certainly ask, and I'm certainly not encouraging by any stretch of the imagination that we go anywhere above what's absolutely needed. And if twenty-five is more than meeting our needs, we may even go to lower on it for the in-town groups. Um, out-of-town groups, I would tell you a hundred is still well below. Um, again, we saw when I, having been on the policy subcommittee when this draft was originally built, um, yeah, you were, we were looking at a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars an hour as much more sort of industry standard, and this was two to three years ago. Um, so as you're kind of looking at that, seeing what the economics are for the impact for the town, and also, um, you know, what are the impacts for the groups? Or if we're, if we're taking in more than we necessarily need, maybe we can adjust it from there. But as you look through that evaluation, I would ask, uh, echo Dawn's comments on, you know, if we don't need to be at twenty-five and we can go lower, great, for in-town. If we can, if we're at a hundred and we go, we can, and we need to go higher on the out-of-town group, my ask for the consideration would be that we look to go charge more for out-of-town groups and less for in-town groups, if we have that opportunity. Or stay the same for in-town and go higher for external. Always look to charge non-Milford residents first. Um, any other questions, comments, or concerns?
So we, we could definitely explore that, um, the next time we, we need. And you, you have the historical perspective. So do, do you recall, did we make any type of commitment to keep these fees in place for, uh, you said a year? Was it a year, two years?
Two years, and this is, and, and.
Still have another year.
Yeah, so, and just so you know, this is it. This is two. We're at two.
This is two now?
Yeah, we're, we are now, we have now just passed, I believe it's actually July first, is actually the year, is actually the two-year mark where we officially, officially became ours. In fact, our first high school graduation fields weren't technically ours yet, uh, when we actually took hold of it, which actually worked in our favor. Um, so.
Time flies.
How time flies.
Joe, just a quick question. Um, it's mandatory that a site manager is on the field for Milford Adult Organizations and out-of-town groups or all other groups. It's mandatory. They don't have a choice of yes or no?
That's correct.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. So the only, the only group that has the choice is the, the Milford Youth Organizations.
Yeah, okay.
And some of them, like the soccer organization, I know they have their own site manager for all of their events. Um, so that person would, they would, they would assign the responsibility to that individual. So we'd, we'd want to check with the, the football organization to see if they have someone in a similar role, or if they'd want to leverage our resources.
Well, that was gonna be my next question, is does somebody have to sign a document saying that they're responsible for what, any damage to the area while their organization is on it?
They, they, they do, and there's that, there's existing language in the policy, um, already. I think it's on, let's see here.
I remember correctly, it's actually in the application.
Yeah, it's written in the policy as well as when they sign their permit. They're agreeing to essentially behave themselves and not destroy anything.
Yeah, and on page two of four, down at the bottom, um, there's, uh, the talks about penalties. So it says, "Any organization not abiding to the conditions set forth in the policy will be satisfied or will jeopardize its access to the use of the field in the future."
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So more, more to come in this one. This is just the first reading, um, you know, certainly appreciate the feedback. Um, we'll take that into consideration and then bring forth a revised policy for, for the next meeting.
Great. Okay. Any other members have any questions? Good. Alright, so thank you. Um, so we do not need to, we're not gonna take a vote on that one tonight unless there's a motion that somebody is interested in trying to do that. Sounds like you guys have some work that you still want to do on that. Great. Thank you guys, and thank you guys for the work. I, I, I know that going through some of these is, uh, sort of a labor of love, so I appreciate you guys, I appreciate the efforts you guys are putting forth on that. Let's move on to our next agenda, and, uh, it's the Bob Show. Dr. Trembley, the reporter of the Superintendent Schools.
We'll make it a, a really, really short show.
Okay.
Uh, the, the first item is the strategic plan for the next three years. I'm excited to present this to you. This is, um, a draft form still. This has been evolving over the course of the last several months. A lot of hard work put in by the leadership team, um, by school councils have begun to inform this. Um, in fact, the, the deadline is tomorrow for school councils to give their final input on this draft. And we went through, it's, it's, um, there are many district improvement plans that are much prettier than this, that have lots more photos. And, uh, this is really sort of a nuts and bolts, whi, which is what I like to work from. It's a document that's gonna have some use to it. It's not gonna be something that's put on the shelf and not referred to. Uh, so it, I'm not gonna go through all these tonight. I would ask you, between now and the next meeting though, um, you just take some time on your own to review it. Certainly if you have questions, give me a call or, or email me, and I'd be happy to, to clarify. It's intended to be really, um, sort of bare-bones, skeletal, basic concepts introduced, um, goals, targets, uh, around expanding enrichment. I think, you know, just to make a general comment, over the last seven years that I've been in this role, now finishing my seventh year, uh, we've done a lot of tremendous work in a lot of areas, particularly though, making sure that we're doing the best we can for our English language learners, our special needs students. Uh, I think it's high time, however, that we really spend some energy moving the dis, districts in a different direction with respect to enrichment opportunities and me, meeting the needs of our high-level learners. Uh, not to say that we haven't, we've shortchanged them over the years, but I think we can do a lot more. We have kids getting into great schools. They're doing that, uh, with a great push from their staff, and maybe they're intrinsically motivated. Um, but I envision things in this plan, as you'll see, around expanding languages at the elementary level as an after-school model. And Lenny alluded to that in his presentation. What, what that was, just to give you a little flavor of it, uh, is rather than having a, um, an immersion program or a FLESS program that we had years past, which was not successful for a variety of reasons, there's not, there's not a lot of time in the school day. We have six hours to get the job done. For the most part, there's an awful lot of competing interests to do that. One model I'm gonna propose in this plan, and it's supported by the Foreign Language Department in Milford, and I've met with all the department heads, uh, is to, and we'll be doing a parent survey in the coming week, uh, is to find, um, what the interests are among families at the elementary level, I'm thinking K four, around learning a second language like Spanish or Mandarin, uh, among others. We'll find out what the interest is and offer these programs after school, provide transportation for the students to get home. A la, a late bus had come up, I think it was, uh, Dr. Boyle in past meeting, had asked about exploring that late bus option. Uh, like to explore that, so we have kids to have a, an after-school program for three or four days a week. That's just one example. Expanding our robotics at the high school, expanding robotics at the middle level. I've met with staff there about doing more with, uh, with that work. Um, we have some real high-end courses that are happening here, CAD design, and now leveraging the business relationships we have with the many that we've established, with, um, Microsoft most recently. EMC, you might have seen in the paper, just in the last, I think it was in the, in the print edition, might have been in electronic edition as well. EMC was just at, at, uh, Middle School East yesterday, um, working with students, uh, exploring, in, you know, enriching their, uh, understanding of engineering and other kinds of fields. Um, this is just a great next step for Milford. And I think this plan, in my view of this plan, uh, really helps to drive the district to a different level. So I would ask that over the next couple of weeks, take the time to look at it, ask some, uh, good questions, some challenging questions, challenge me on some of these things. Uh, it is ambitious. It's very ambitious, actually. Um, but what, what it will do is, uh, what I envision from this, as you saw the school improvement plans that have come, the school improvement plans align to the current district improvement plan, and actually there's some foreshadowing to what this plan, before you, uh, and the, and that the administrators came and presented, will continue to present, uh, so they can begin to drive those school-based initiatives. If you think of it this way, the district strategic plan is sort of a menu that they'll pull down from, and, and, and the, the schools will determine, and the district will as well, who the right players are, what the key resources are budget developments, uh, go in, uh, succeeding years, to roll these initiatives out. And whether there's just a year one, and many, many of which you'll see are exploration. We wanna just get an idea if this is a good idea or not. Feel it out, whether it's through surveys, and then begin to do what works well in Milford as a pilot implementation phase. Uh, we very seldomly go in sort of full guns and adopt without checking it out first and making sure that it does what we think it will do. Uh, so that's the overview of that. I'm not looking for any kind of a vote tonight. I am looking for your input, uh, on this, on this document. Again, it's a, it's a work in progress. Uh, but I hope you find it as, um, as interesting and as, uh, for, forward-thinking as, as I do. So if you've had a chance to review it already, if you have questions, I'd be happy to entertain those. Otherwise, I would just, uh, ask that you consider this for the, the next two weeks.
Good. Any members have any questions or concerns they want to voice now, or do we want to give it a couple of weeks here? Okay.
Okay. And again, as questions come up along the way, feel free to reach out. I'd be happy to, uh, explain them. Again, I want to thank, uh, Dr. McIntyre, um, Kathy Perry, the principals, leadership team, curriculum team leaders, and school councils who've already put input into this document.
Okay.
The, uh, the next item is my, um, year-end report, so it's that time of the year. And so, uh, I know that for Joe and for Jen, um, you weren't here for the mid, the, the mid-cycle report, others were. Um, for, for the, in general, you probably know this process well, the evaluation process. This follows directly with the DESE recommendation. Uh, so what I provided for you at your, as a distribution, I think you have it in front of you, is an evaluation tool. Um, Melissa will, uh, will follow up with each of you to provide an electronic word version, so you can, if you prefer to, to do this and, and, you know, type it in. And you'll just basically be using that against the document that I'm providing you here. So you'll want to reference this as you complete the evaluation. The way the process works is a reminder, is that each of you will submit your own, uh, evaluation of my performance as superintendent. Based on these standards, the goals will align to that. Uh, and then that would all be fed to the chair, and then the chairman would put together, um, a, you know, basically a consolidation, so the committee speaks in one voice. You'd still each provide me your own feedback, so I would know, um, you know, what, and this is all shared publicly. Uh, so I would just, um, ask for your consideration of that. That said, I'll walk you with, through what's in the packet, and you may want to look simultaneously at the document that I gave you, just in case there's any questions. So when you sit in front of this to complete it, there's not the, what do I do now, uh, kind of question.
Just to, I don't know, interrupt you for a moment, for, because we've got a number of new members here. Uh, you went through this process last year, Joe, and I know, uh, Joey and Jen, this will be the first year for you. Um, you know, what we'll do is, is we can certainly maybe set aside some, uh, we can set aside a meeting, uh, as we've done maybe, uh, the July meeting.
Yeah, summertime is.
It's usually a summertime meeting, where we actually kind of walk you guys through this. This is, uh, Jen, you may have seen something similar to this just in your professional life. Joey, this will be something that'll be new for you. It's not the, it's not the easiest tool to go through the first time. Takes a, takes a little practice. So we're still getting the hang of it. This is, I think, only the third time it's at the full committees. And no, none of us have used it more than twice at this point, so, um, I certainly don't think we're experts on it, but it does say it takes some practice. So this might should be a July meeting, that will actually spend some time actually kind of walking you through the tool and what it looks like and feels like. And, um, this is something, just from a due date perspective, I would ask that by the, um, we'll set some due dates on when we'll, I'll ask for you guys to have submitted these to me, so I have some time to, um, sort of pull them together. I'll present it. It, it's usually the September meeting.
I said to Jen earlier, we used to make it July, and it always got pushed into September.
Yep, it's a, it's, it's.
Miles will make a realistic.
Yeah, that's what I said, is July is, we'll, we'll, we'll just review the tool.
Right.
And in September is when I'll actually, I'll probably actually ask probably by like, I don't know, August fifteenth, as this, as a, as a tentative date for you guys to have submitted back to me your, um, your evaluation of Bob's, uh, of, of Bob, so that I have time to present it. I'll present in the open meeting forum, the summary, and I'll kind of pull together everybody's comments and some highlights and some opportunities. Um, Bob will ultimately get the unfiltered version, along with my summary and my, and, and everyone's individuals, and he'll be able to take that back and put that into his goals that he then writes for the future year. So, just to kind of give you an overview of what that process looks like. So, uh, you'll see this, this is gonna be a much more common topic of conversation probably over our next two to three meetings.
Um, so what I have in the, in the end of second report, just, this is summary of just some, some accomplishments. Um, again, I'm not gonna, I'll, I'll make this public for people who wish to see it, and I'm, uh, happy, I want to walk through every single one of these. I'll just highlight some things here. I want to just read this list, though. This is, this is a benefit for us. Um, these are some of our district accomp, accomplishments over the year. We do, we do so much to really, we can improve this, we can improve this, we can improve this, we can always improve. But there are some things that it's good to take pause and say, you know, um, in the here and now, we did a pretty good job. Uh, and, and these are district accomplishments. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm proud to be the head of the district, but certainly these are all accomplishments, uh, that are shared by many. Uh, there are, we, this year we celebrated our first annual school day games with Special Olympics in Massachusetts. The Chris Heron presentation we had in the fall and substance abuse awareness programs. And there'll be more programs that we've even set up for next year to continue that work. Uh, Dawn, thank you for all your support on that effort. And there's more, you know, we'll be looking to you for, for more support on that. The successful implementation of a new schedule at Milford High School. And there's been, it's a learning curve there. We continue to work through that. But no small task, no small feat, even the committee having to negotiate this and have this, a lot of the time involved with this, to actually see that come through fruition. The first cohort of our hospitality and tourism management program and those students. And we have some great, uh, great ways to streamline the work we do next year. Dr. Carla Tuttle about that. So as we have events, now we have this student group, we can send work orders to them. So when they, when I do an alumni event for, um, you know, the homecoming, the, now our student based team, hospitality, tourism and management, they coordinate it all. And we've, I've given that away now. Amy Tullani is taking the lead on that for the hospitality, rather for the, uh, the alumni event. And, uh, you know, so now these students can order the food and things from Carla. So we get students right in the middle of it and, uh, having their hands in some of this great, these great ideas and, and projects. Uh, as Nancy mentioned, a completed five year report submitted for NIASC. And there's a challenge there, including grade eight in that, and having her, the work that she did to, to merge those two schools as well as she has. And that really has set us up very, very well, uh, for the move to Woodland School. The, uh, our, now this is, no, uh, no, uh, small achievement either. The annual measurable achievement, achievement objectives, this is called AMO for short. Uh, this is specifically for the goals and, uh, the, the progress our English language learner students have made. Um, they, we've now for the first time since two thousand and seven, met all of those objectives with a population of roughly four hundred English language learners in Milford. That is a tremendous accomplishment that we should all be proud of. Uh, thanks to Jen Lancaster for her work in leading the way on that and Ann Feldman before her. Uh, notable movement to our duly certified classroom model where teacher specialist provides services within the classroom setting. And just to break down what that really means, is that we have teachers now in our classes with multiple licenses, so that we have less pullout for kids. So we have teachers who can provide the services under the law, right in front of them in the class with their peers. And having less kids pulled into some corner of a room or into some smaller space. Uh, there's still a need for that in some cases, but generally speaking, uh, this has been a tremendous, uh, effort for us in, 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 in really college recruitments, as Kevin has been attending college fairs this year, to find people who have these dual certifications and who speak multiple languages and, uh, and, and really bring the best and brightest to Milford. District wide safety and security improvements. Uh, you know, Mike and Dawn, you guys, you guys know those full well from the reporting out here. We've made some great accomplishments and there's still many more coming. Uh, implementation of QuickBooks in the food service department to streamline operations and accounting procedures. Uh, Milford School's food department is one of the few food service departments in the Commonwealth that actually hasn't subbed out some other vendor and is running in the black. Increased use of interactive technology for learning and communication. We have more to that, of that that we're looking to do, provided that we have the bandwidth to do it. But right now, we're still using an awful lot of that, particularly at the middle level. Uh, two hundred and fifty-one student athletes recognized this year on the honor roll or high honor roll. Milford High School teams qualified for the postseason in nine sports and won four league titles this year. Uh, the realignment of curriculum and pacing guides to account for common core state standards. Tremendous amount of work that our staff has done to do that. Expansion of middle school athletics. And grant funding for additional AEDs. So these are the, we had a student who recall playing hockey, that the AED saved this child's life. And now we've, uh, Judy successfully wrote a grant to Judy Dagnes, uh, to have more of these in our district. This is just some of the highlights. There's, there's pages and pages and pages, but I wanted to just acknowledge those contributions. Uh, moving into the end of cycle report, um, again, mostly for, for the benefit of Jen and Joe, where you hadn't really seen this before. The committee, uh, I presented these initially back last fall, last winter, rather last summer, I think.
Uh, yeah, September, right after school started.
Right after school started, uh, there was feedback from the committee, modifications of the goals, uh, then a mid-year progress report. And then now this is the end of the year report. So in the columns where there's, that did not meet on the one end to the exceeded on the other end, you'll have those same kinds of questions in your, uh, document, um, uh, that you'll, that you'll have to weigh in on. So this is my view of it. Um, you may, uh, feel differently. So building administrator capacity, superintendent as coach. I'm not gonna read all these benchmarks that they're all there. What I do have, and it may be the benefit for the two of you particularly, is a binder. So there's the evidence portion of this. So when I say it on here and, and then you say, okay, well prove it. So that's what this does. So this is the, uh, this is the, you know, the audit version.
It's the showtime version.
Yeah. So I will, what I'll do is since I didn't make a copy for everybody, uh, I will keep a copy in my office. Melissa will have that. And if you wish to see it, um, you certainly can thumb through it. And, uh, again, it's all, it's all here. The, the references are here, so you don't have a thousand page document.
Bob, in the, in the interest of leveraging technology as well as trying not to completely wipe out the rainforest here, can we, uh, can you have that out of the Dropbox? Have, have, have her add that to Dropbox?
Melissa, if you're watching this, this is, this'll be, this'll be, this'll be.
Hands over there. Well, here's the thing, that's what I was gonna say, is do you have this in electronic copy? Does she have this? And I guess that's probably a better first question. Do we have this in electronic copy?
These, well, these doc, yeah, we do, but not, not all in, in one, uh, in one, but we'll assemble it.
Either PDF, whatever is the easiest way and least time consuming way, but in electronic files such that the whole committee can leverage it via the iPads that they have.
Yep, no problems. We'll, we'll, we'll upload this to the Dropbox. You have it as your fingertips.
Quick question. Um, with, with all the problems, accomplishments on this, where, where's the stuff that didn't get done? Is this in here as well, or?
Uh, well.
You set goals and it didn't get done, but we're only seeing the accomplishments on it.
Well, in terms of, in terms of what I have for goals, and I'll speak to those now. And I, and there are some areas that, that didn't meet the goal, in my view, as well as I, as I think I could have, or as well as time would allow. Or for any other reasons, and I'll explain that. The district's accomplishments were really just the, um, the schools and the various departments reporting in on some of their highlights of their, of their year. So I didn't, uh, I didn't have them for the purpose of this to, you know, highlight their weaknesses.
No, I didn't know if that was something that we would see as well, too. I mean, like, being, being a newcomer, I didn't know if you were gonna highlight just accomplishments and not the faults.
Oh, yeah, in my, in my goals. For what you're gonna evaluate for me, yeah, I will. I'll still be walking through that right now, in fact.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, do you wanna walk us through that, or is it something that we wanna have the board go through? We can certainly go through it, but to go, this is part of the evaluation process that we're gonna go through. We can certainly look through each of the components. So it's, it's up to the committee. We can certainly spend that time now, if you'd like, and we can have Bob walk through his, walk through his evaluation, both strengths and opportunities. Or we can table that, put it as a separate agenda item and have Bob actually review that at a future meeting and walk us through what his sort of early self-evaluation of what he's seen, so as we're starting to see those things.
Uh, I'd like to see a table. That way we can do it all at once.
Do you want to, um, I, I, why don't we do that? Let's table that, let's table that, uh, as an, as a, as an item. We'll put that on an agenda for a future meeting, um, probably July.
Okay.
Either the next June meeting or the July meeting depending on time.
So we'll do this, this particular part of the review as well as the.
Yeah, just kinda reviewing the tool as well as having you kinda review.
Okay.
Here's, here's what I see worked, here's what I see I still, I missed on, um, and then we can go through from there.
Sure.
Okay. So we'll put that on the next agenda.
Very good. So I guess that will, uh, simplify that. Yep. Part of it. And I'll go on to the Woodland School, uh.
I should just one question before you jump ahead. So does that change the deadline and would you want us to return the evaluation?
The evaluation that, uh, like August fifteenth. So we're gonna just review that piece probably at our next meeting in two weeks. Um, and then the July meeting, we would just review the tool, just to make sure everybody's familiar with how to, how to use the tool.
Okay.
And that gives you roughly thirty days from July fifteenth, roughly the July, mid-July meeting until the middle of August. And we can adjust that date as time, and I'll, that, we'll probably adjust that date if it goes along, maybe August thirtieth.
And then you'll, you'll compile everything presented, okay?
Yep.
I know last year, um, Patrick, Rob and I sort of worked on it together, but you're fine. You're okay.
Yeah, and we may, I, we may go down that road. It's, that's the problem. I'm probably still, we're probably still at least one, if not two meetings away from having to probably establish that. But if that's something you're, if you're volunteering for it, I'll certainly take the help.
Can I ask, uh, one more?
Absolutely.
On the bulleted list, Bob, there's nothing on there about the Woodland School. And I don't know if that was there purposely, 'cause it was somewhere else, but if not, not that anybody here wouldn't be thinking about it. Um, but we wanna make sure that that's highlighted in the evaluation, 'cause that's such a huge accomplishment of the district this year.
It's probably so big I missed it.
Well, I mean, for you, I think it, you just want it on there.
Yeah.
'Cause that obviously took a lot of time and had a great outcome, so.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. No question.
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if we'd be better off, the night that we set in July to get together to review the tool for the new members, if the first half of the meeting, we didn't have the superintendent come in and go over.
Yep.
You know what I mean? So it'll be fresh in everybody's mind. Instead of doing it in a school committee meeting and then in July, we get together. Maybe have, you know, the superintendent come in the first half of the meeting, you know, make it like a two hour meeting. Give Bob an hour to come in and talk about his successes and what he was unable to accomplish.
Okay.
You know, and then we can discuss the proper use of the tool. Maybe something like that would.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. So we'll do that for the July meeting then.
Yeah. So that, there solely, that's what you're, you know, you'll come in knowing that you're gonna go through it with us. And, you know, the, you know, the great things that you did do and a couple of the things that you didn't, weren't able to accomplish, so we'll know.
Sure.
And then we'll explain how to use the tool and.
Yeah.
At that point, I'll have some preliminary goals to lay out as well, based on the strategic plan, so.
So why don't we do that? So that'll be the, table that.
Is everybody all right with that? I mean, yeah.
We'll table that for, we'll put that on the July, July meeting agenda. That'll be our July meeting.
That way we're discussing that.
Yeah, it's all real time. Makes sense. Thanks, Mike.
I wanna make sure I was in compliance with my own timelines for the report, so it's submitted for you, for your review. Very good. The, uh, the last item under my report is the Woodland School building project update. Um, so we've been just mostly in this design phase of finalizing the plans, uh, the site plans around the property. The architects have put together more renderings. And this is submission that was recently, uh, um, made to the MSBA. Uh, nothing really particularly new since the last time. Um, the only that's, that's come up that you probably saw in, uh, recent media was discussion now, um, an increased discussion around the reuse of Middle School East. I mentioned that earlier, uh, about the Heritage Week. Uh, and so, just to give you some, some, some background on that, uh, you may recall a memo. I can't remember when, if it predates the two of you or the committee or not. I issued a memo to the, uh, Board of Selectmen, to the town administrator, uh, saying that reuse committee, uh, would be estab, if reuse committee were to be established, I would want to be on that committee and express to make sure we have school department recognize, you know, recognized and represented. Uh, so now that, uh, we're at a point, I guess the Board of Selectmen brought that forward as to now consider this, um, reuse committee. It's important to know though, that the school committee first has to declare that the building is no longer necessary. So right now, the, the Middle School East is still the school's property. The, um, what was made, mentioned at town meeting was that, and it was been in, in the, um, uh, all along in our, in our, uh, long range educational plan, was voted upon several, several times in fact, by the committee, was that Middle School East, uh, would go back to the town essentially. Become offline as a school building for the Milford Schools. Uh, so that still is the plan. Now, in two years' time, when that school is now, has to be declared that we don't need this, that school committee at that time will have to say, we don't need this building, it's now to the town. Then it becomes the town surplus. Until that time, it still belongs to the school department. Uh, however, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't start some forward thinking in the next two years, anticipating the school will be built on time in two thousand and sixteen, so that we're not left with a vacant building. Particularly if it's going to be used something educationally, uh, that now we would have to bring it up to code perhaps if we wait too long, uh, on that building. So there's a number of discussions. I'm sure there's a number of people in town who have ideas. I know that the selectmen have had a discussion, uh, just this week on this topic. I'm sure there'll be, uh, an ask, if there hasn't been already, to have school committee representation as well as, as me. I know Larry Duncan representing the IDC expressed an interest, uh, and I'm sure there are many others. Some ideas I wanna put on the table for the committee to consider, and then I hope will get communicated, and I know that will get communicated by me. I hope it has the school committee's support for, at least for, a part of the goals for next year for me, is to review some, uh, some cost benefit to a couple of ideas. I've mentioned, these are, they're not new ideas. One is looking at possibly, uh, with Quincy Community College, looking to expand their South Bridge campus to a satellite. Whether or not there would be an appetite for a community, uh, community college to use part of that space. And there's an, uh, an interest in town, uh, to preserve the gymnasium, even though with Woodland School coming online, which has a gym, we're gonna be effectively losing a gym if Middle School East gym goes away from us. I know that there's, if we're looking to expand middle school athletics, there's certainly a viable argument to be made that we wanna keep that gym so we can expand basketball beyond, so we're not just looking at soccer for middle school expansion. I just have a few more ideas and, uh, around this that are on my mind. Uh, so that's just a couple. Um, looking at what we can do for, um, uh, possibly some of our programs where we spend tuition out in one particular area, and I have some survey data that I got from Nancy Angelini of grade eight students. I'm putting together a survey also, Dawn, on the, uh, students, uh, who've left Milford High School and who've choiced into Milford High School, asking them the questions about why they chose in, why they chose out. Uh, some of the early response that I got from a Middle School East eighth grade, um, a number of students who wanna go to Norfolk Aggie. We spend about, how much Kathy, would you say? Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in tuition that we have to pay out to Norfolk Agricultural School, because those programs are not offered at Blackstone Valley Tech. So we, uh, if, if Norfolk Aggie accepts them, we are on the hook to pay them. It may be worth looking at some programming in Milford, uh, down the road, to see how we can kinda recoup that, what I would call a loss. So there's a few ideas on the table. Again, it would come to, the school committee would come to this, this, this committee, however it chooses to proceed. But I wanted to put that out there as part of the, uh, consideration.
So, before I go to the, to the rest of the board, I, I do wanna remind you, and I, and Bob, I appreciate you kinda bringing up some of those things. So a couple of things, just to give you some context. Our long range educational plan has been in place for in excess of a decade. It has been voted on and approved year in and year out by this as well as all previous boards. Part of that long range educational plan is that, that is that Middle School East will be turned over to the Board of Selectmen and in essence turned back to the town at the time of the completion of Woodland School. At that time, it is at the discussion and in the decision solely of the Board of Selectmen of what the future use is. As we've discussed on previous occasions, um, should the Board of Selectmen, as they are doing their pre-planning now, which I think is Milford has always done, plans ahead, 'cause that's how we, we survive best, and that's how we continue to thrive. Um, I understand from the Board of Selectmen that they are interested in, in forming a committee to begin to explore those opportunities, where ideas such as the ones that you just brought forth, Bob, would be certainly able to be explored.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't, I don't feel as the chair, that, and as a member of this committee, that it's in our best interest. Nor quite frankly, is it in line with what our long-term educational plan that's continued to be voted and renewed for the last ten plus years to either, either, uh, proactively or reactively, or as a side, or as an aside to that, the, the Board of Selectmen, um, to supersede that. My, my, my ask would be that we look to be, I'd be active members and participants in that Board of Selectmen's process now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my understanding is that they are forming that, that, uh, the chair, their chairman this year is forming that committee right now and has asked for school committees, or is asking for, um, school support on that.
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna ask, in fact, I, um, I would like you to reach out to, on behalf of our board, uh, the Board of Selectmen and Dino and Rick, and ask them if they would like a school committee member as a member of that, unless that has already been asked.
I spoke with Dino, um, uh, on Monday of this week, and he did mention that he would like school committee support, uh, school committee representation. I'm not sure if he's spelled out how many members. I'll also need to follow up and find out how many members.
Find out how many members he's looking for.
But Mr. Chairman, I think you have to, you have to respect the fact that how long the long range plan has been in effect, what members were here then and aren't here now.
Mm-hmm.
Speaking personally, what I have concerns with is, um, and yeah, we are building a big, beautiful new gym. And the armory's getting renovated. We still don't have enough gym space in this town. So I think we really seriously need to look at that. Another concern that I have is we're building a brand new school that everybody knows is already maxed. And we have to do that, 'cause that's what the state's telling us to do. Who knows what two years or three years down the road is gonna happen? So I, I would like to allow the school committee to have an active role, to, to possibly look if in fact, at that time, we do have to hold on to the building. I'm not saying, let's not change the educational plan. But let's have an open mind that, you know, what do we, if we have to use that building, are we ready to use it?
Right. And I think participating in this, in this, in this, um, in, in this, uh, committee along with the Board of Selectmen
Right.
um, allows us that opportunity as well. I think it does do that. Rather than try and form our own subcommittee and then coming up with our own ideas, this is an opportunity to work in, in, um, in agreeance with the Board of Selectmen as well, who, you know, based on, not to your point, long range educational plan was formed many, many years ago.
Right.
That being said, it's still been renewed and revoted on, um, to continue to remain by, by this as well as recent boards. Um, so I, I, I think by allowing us, I agree with you, keeping an open mind on it and working, and that's why I had asked Bob if he's working with, if the Board of Selectmen is forming this committee, great, that's what that committee is going to do.
Right.
And having school committee, uh, presence on that, along with Dr. Tremblay, I think it allows us to have our voices heard and be a very active member in that. If the Board of Selectmen were to say, no, we're good, we're just gonna make the decisions on our own, I would agree with you. I think we probably need to take a separate action. I think that this way it's a, it's a, it's a, uh, working in, working in conjunction with.
I just wanted to piggyback on, on Mike's point. Um, and I don't know if the solution is to form a subcommittee at the school level or just leverage the folks that represent the schools within that committee that the, the Board of Selectmen's taking and putting together. But I think we do have to do a comprehensive analysis and review of the district, because to Mike's point, you know, when we open this new school, it's gonna be at capacity. We have Shining Star that is, is gonna start to grow, and they're gonna be looking for space as well. And then we have programs like the Family Network, Family Resource Center, Head Start, which we've already moved out of Milford to, I believe, Medway, that we may need space for. We have the gymnasium issue, so I, I'm sure there's a lot more out there that we just haven't thought of yet. So we need to do a very deep dive and comprehensive review before we start having any discussions. Or maybe simultaneously, as the, this, the, um, other. deep dive and comprehensive review before we start having any discussions, or maybe simultaneously, as the, the, um, other committees put together to look at these things. Because you know how things work here. Once an idea gets some momentum, then there's gonna be a lot of pressure on the school committee to give up that building, and we may not necessarily want to, so, um, I think we do need to make sure we.
I agree with you. I think that's why being able to be part of that committee is very, very critical. Um, in addition to, quite frankly, um, I, I think we've got to be very, I think we we're skating on a very, we've got to skate on a very thin line here. Um, we, within the last ninety days, asked the taxpayers of the town of Milford for sixty million nine hundred thousand dollars to build a new school, and part of that conversation was on the understanding that a million dollars of annual, of annual expense, that, which is the cost of what it keeps, to keep the lights on at Middle School East, will no longer be coming into the school system. So I, I think it's an important point. To all the points that are made, I think it's important that that's the reason why I think it's so important that we are part of that conversation, um, for all the points that were earlier made, to be very actively involved along with the Board of Selectmen. But at the end of the day, we, we also just within ninety days asked the taxpayers of Milford for almost sixty-one million dollars for a program that they've been working on for ten years. So to, we've got to, I, I think we've got to balance here, and we do, we are, you know, it is, it is a precarious situation as we are constantly in when it comes to, when it comes to asking, when it comes to asking the taxpayers in the town of Milford for money. So, um, I, I think we're, you know, we're, we've been asked, yes, the building will be at capacity to be able to serve the town of Milford for in excess of ten years. Um, it's, the building is being, the new building that will be being designed, as has been presented here on multiple occasions, is designed for a very long-term building, fifty years plus, I believe was the number they were showing, but based on population expected growth of ten years, which certainly would allow us some opportunity to have some very good open discussion around what could be done with either that building or any other. So, um, I, 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 I think all the points are, are valid, and I do think that that's ultimately why I think it's so critical that we are very active participants in that, in that subcommittee along with the Board of Selectmen. So if you would please report back, and please, uh, get that information. How many members are they looking for? Um, are they looking for one? Are they looking for six? Are they looking for however many? Um, Board of Selectmen, uh, Board of School Committee members, school committee members, as well as any other administrators or, uh, school employees?
And I'll try to get a, a list of what sort of, uh, positions Dino had in mind of, of who the rep- so we have a, so the school committee has a sense of their full representation of what that board looks like, the, the makeup of it.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Yep, and then if we need to make a decision, otherwise, we, we can do that. Okay?
Okay, so that, it's sort of in tandem with the Woodland School Project update that's related, but that's all I have to, under my report this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. Next up, we have the report of the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Human Resources, speaking of spending money. We have warrant money tonight.
I have six warrants for the committee's approval this evening. The first warrant is in the amount of four hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, take a motion from Joe, second from Mike, all in favor. Motion passes.
Second warrant is in the amount of twenty-five thousand, one hundred seven dollars and eighty-four cents.
Okay, take a motion from Jen, second from Dawn, all in favor. Motion passes.
The third warrant is in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Take a motion from Mike, second from Joey, all in favor.
The fourth warrant is in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars and forty-six cents.
Take a motion from Dawn, second from Jen, all in favor. Motion passes.
The fifth warrant is in the amount of two hundred five thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety-four cents.
Take a motion from Joey, second from Joe. That's gonna get confusing. All in favor?
And the last warrant is in the amount of three hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-four cents.
Okay, take a motion from Jen, second from Mike, all in favor. Motion passes.
And the only other write-in this evening is the committee has a personnel update from the previous meeting of our, uh, latest hires, for your information only.
Keep waiting for that last line. Do we have any jury duties?
We do not.
Mike, can you believe, let's be the summertime. Alright. Uh, do we have any gifts this evening?
We do not.
Okay.
I, I actually have a question on gifts.
Dawn.
Do we just have to vote on monetary gifts, or if, uh, company donate something? Do we have to?
We, we do both. Gifts and kind would be of value of what the donation was for, as well as the typical gift.
Alright, well, I, I know the school received a, a great gift from, it's Nikon or Canon, and then another one from Box.
Yeah, we had that on the next, uh.
And I know it's on the agenda that we're gonna address the student who helped us raise the funds for the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
But those were gifts received by the school, and I'd like to know why they're not part of the gift thing tonight.
Well, because they, they came on either Tuesday or Wednesday of this week.
Okay.
There is a, a small paper process between what Melissa puts out and the school committee packet, that's all. Just timing.
Yeah, I think it's on the next, it's the next meeting we have his gifts. We acknowledge them, but we just got it this week.
Yeah?
Alright. Okay.
Well, great.
Yeah, we, we, we're very appreciative, of course.
That's a, that's a pretty generous gift. Great. Thank you, Dawn. Um, Kathy, anything else?
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Alright. Onto, uh, Dr. McIntyre, report of the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Great, I have, I have two updates for the committee tonight. The first one is, um, on the state testing decision policy discussion, and the second is an update on a question that Dawn had at the last meeting about the elementary music schedule. Um, we received a memo from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Um, well, actually, let me, let me, let me step back a little bit. This, each school district in the state of Massachusetts, and I think I talked about this at the previous meeting, has to make a decision between either MCAS or Park Testing. And I've been kind of updating the committee on the process throughout the year. And there's really three reasons why we, um, I'm gonna recommend a vote from the committee tonight on our recommendations. One is that we need to choose between Parker and MCAS for the next school year. Two is we received a memo, um, on May twenty-seventh from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, recommending it as a policy vote for school committees across the Commonwealth. And third, we want to meet the June thirtieth early deadline to ensure that our preferences are registered with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so we kind of get the test selections that we particularly are looking for. And I want to just very quickly walk the committee through, and I gave everyone a packet of this, this presentation that I'm gonna walk you through, um, and just give you some of the highlights of kind of what some of these considerations are. And we kind of talked about some of them before, but I just want to just bring them back to your attention, um, before you potentially would, would take a vote. Um, field testing happened across Massachusetts. Eighty-one thousand students participated, a thousand fifty schools across the Commonwealth and three hundred and forty-five districts. That's a very high representation in terms of schools and districts. They happened in grades three through eleven. The great, in grade ten, it was the end-of-year test, which happened after MCAS. Most students were selected for either the performance-based assessment or the end-of-year assessment. A small group were selected for both. One-third of the students selected were taking the paper version, and actually, everybody in Milford took the ELA, um, test ex, uh, in paper and pencil, except for the high school, which took it online. Two-thirds of the schools selected took the online version. Uh, the majority of students expressed a preference for the online tests over paper and pencil tests. Seventy-four percent of ELA students liked the online test better. Fifty-six percent of the students preferred the math test. There was some, there were more technical issues with the math, um, tests this year than there were with the ELA test, which might reflect those, those numbers. Um, all or most test questions asked students about things they had learned in school this year, so it means that, um, the state is kind of, the schools within the state are more or less aligned to the common core. Eighty-seven percent in English language arts, seventy percent in math. Twenty-eight percent reported that the ELA test was more difficult than their schoolwork, and sixty-one percent of students reported the math test was more difficult. This is gonna lead us to really do a close look over the summer to make sure our alignment, especially with this courses at the high school level, are, we're, we're, we're kind of setting ourselves up for, for perfect alignment with the, uh, with the Park tests that are happening at the secondary level, which really isn't gonna hit us for a few years, if, if in fact the state does go in the Park direction.
Just a clarifying question, Kevin.
Yep.
Did the students who were surveyed, those Milford students?
Or Massachusetts?
So everybody who took the test was, um, exactly. And the, um, and the, we did, we did kind of more informal surveying, where we were looking more for general feedback, because I didn't want to
All students who took the test were included.
get specific, um, feedback on test questions.
Okay.
Um, we got similar results. Um, you know, it was kind of mixed experiences. Um, people, you know, students generally felt like they were prepared for the tests. Uh, the students at the high school did prefer taking it on the computer, which was, which was interesting, because I think that's how they're used to kind of interacting with things generally. Okay?
I'd, I do just have one additional question on that. Do you feel that because, I don't know, one of the things that you've expressed in the past is that, uh, the concern is, is the majority of school systems will not be able to administer this test, um, online.
Yep.
Um, the sample size being two-thirds online, knowing that there's no chance we're gonna be, certainly here in the town of Milford, in that two-third group that's gonna be able to do it online. In fact, based on what you've been telling us, most systems will be doing it paper-based, at least initially. Do you feel that that will skew some of the results here?
Um, when you say skew results, what do you mean?
So in essence, um, it, there may be di- are there different tactics? Are there potentially, will potentially skew some of the results of the test? Um, you talked about some of the favorability. Most students favored doing it online, whereas now, great, so what you're telling us, you really enjoyed, and two-thirds of people, what you really liked best about the test was you really liked the fact that it's online. By the way, that's not an option.
So, so I would say that the way the test is designed, and again, I'm not a psychometrician, but the way the test is designed is that the online experience and the paper and pencil experience should be pretty similar.
Hmm. Yep. Okay.
Um, Eamon Cunningham, who's a, one, a member of our English department, was part of the process of like the question development,
Mm-hmm.
and there was a significant amount of time spent making sure that the experiences of the students with the questions would be, and again, you're not gonna get a hundred percent coverage on all questions, but we're similar enough that you're getting kind of, um, the same kind of assessment experience for the students. Um, seventy-two percent of the stu- of the schools in Massachusetts right now are not fully ready to implement the online testing.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, that was my only question. Does it make a, does it, will it make a difference in that? So that's good. If you're not, if you don't, if you feel that it doesn't?
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, for, and this is very interesting in terms of typing the, um, questions into the online version of the test. And we did not take the math test here in, in Milford, but eighty-seven percent found it easy to type answers for ELA. Fifty-eight percent found it easy for math. Forty-one percent found it hard for math. And there was some, there was some technical issues with the math in terms of the way they were answering the question, the way they were expected to answer the question, and also there was boxes. Um, and again, we didn't have it here, so I didn't get to see this, but I've, I've heard it from a number of people across the state, where it was tough to kind of scroll down in the box to like re- respond to the question. And I guess you kind of have to see it to really know the mechanics of it, but there were, students had issues with that, or issues changing their answers with the math, which they didn't have as much with the ELA version of the test. Um, thirty-one percent of ELA online students experienced a problem during testing, forty-six percent in math, with twenty-two percent having trouble changing answers. So that just gives you a sense of the tech issues, and this is again, the first rollout of this. Um, generally, folks felt it was easy to navigate, and the accessibility tools were easy to use, in terms of bringing down, like, if you needed a ruler for a particular question, or you know, whatever, whatever the type of question was asking, and the resource you needed, that you had access to in the, in the online version of the test. Um, eighty-one percent of teachers have never administered a computer-based test before in the, in the state. So there's not a lot of teachers with experience administering kind of computer-based online testing, just as a general, as a general rule. I know they work with a lot of software.
Yep, in this.
But, uh, twenty-nine percent said none of the students in their class needed additional time, which means seventy-one percent did need additional time. Uh, forty-four percent said less than a third needed additional time, and twenty-eight percent said approximately half the students needed additional time. And again, this is a big shift, because MCAS is untimed to Park, which is, which is a timed test. Uh, forty-eight percent of teachers said the training did not prepare them to solve basic problems related to technology. Forty-six percent agreed that the training was adequate. We had Dan Nelson at the high school providing tremendous support to our classrooms, and Carrie Bonak, if she was here tonight, would say that he was, he was essential to be in those rooms as the testing was happening, because just in terms of logging on, it was just a new process for people, and just the mechanics of it required a lot of support that I think maybe five or six years from now, we probably may not need. But initially, we're gonna need a lot of tech support to, to potentially get this off the ground. Um, again, seventy-two percent of schools need more devices to test all their students in grade three through eleven. So that, so that in terms of the deadlines, that there's a June thirtieth deadline for, um, districts to register their decision. And that's the early registration date, which guarantees your selection, whatever your preference is. And then there's another deadline, October first, which you would get your, your selection pending availability. My recommendation tonight to you, I'll, I'll recommend what I think we should go as a district, but also, I think we should hit that June thirtieth deadline, so we get, so we guarantee ourselves those preferences. So you're, you're making a few choices, and it gets a little complicated. Um, you can choose all Park or all MCAS tests for grades three through eight, for both subjects. And if Park is chosen for grade eight math, we have to designate how many students would roughly take the grade eight mathematics test, and how many students would take the Algebra One test. And we do have students in, in eighth grade that are taking Algebra One versus the general eighth grade math curriculum. Um, also, districts need to decide if they're going to take the ninth and eleventh grade Park tests, which can be separate from the three through eight decision. And for the high school, they can make separate decisions for ELA and mathematics, remembering that tenth, for tenth grade, MCAS is the graduation requirement competency determination for this, this upcoming class and the following class. So we'll be giving MCAS tests in terms of makeups for at least two thousand eighteen, regardless of what happens with, with Park. And then for the high school, there's, there's a number of different tasks. There's Integrated Mathematics One, Integrated Mathematics Two, Algebra One, Algebra Two, and Geometry, which are all end-of-course tests. And again, that's, that's, that speaks to some of the alignment I was talking about for the math department at the high school, because some of the courses need to be adjusted based on these, these new assessments, which won't be in place for a couple of years.
If I remember correctly, you had said that one of the deadlines for the June, was the June thirtieth one,
Yep.
was also if we were gonna be, if, if we wanted to ensure paper-based, if the state decides, yeah, we're all going to Park. In order to be paper-based, we had to
Correct, correct.
Prove it by June thirtieth, is that?
Correct, and that's why we want to hit that deadline.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yep. Um, the reason that some schools are considering using the, um, Park tests for high school is that the grade eleven ELA and Integrated Math Three and the Algebra Two tests will qualify students to take credit-bearing courses in all state colleges. Um, a statistic that's kind of a scary statistic, and this is a statewide statistic, and it mirrors statistics nationally, is up to sixty percent of community college students are now placed in remedial courses. And only seventeen percent of all community college students graduate with an associate's degree within three years. And less than five percent of those graduate within three years who are on the remedial path, who are forced to take these remedial courses, because they don't have the skills to come into, to college. So that's the reason they're giving, schools the option to do this. There's, there's Accuplacer and a number of other, um, avenues for, for students to, um, kind of show their, uh, show their competency in those areas. Alright, so what other factors should students consider? All students in grade five, eight in high school participate in MCAS Science and Technology and Engineering Test. There's no talk right now of changing science. Um, Park participation includes both a performance-based assessment, which happens usually about the typical MCAS time, and then the end-of-year assessment for both mathematics and ELA. So committing to Park would be two basically one-to-one-and-a-half-hour sessions for both ELA and mathematics. And then the, the timelines, April sixteen, I'm, I'm sorry, um, March twenty-third to April, April third for paper-based testing for the performance-based assessments, and then May eleventh to May twenty-second for the paper-based end-of-year assessments. And that's in, that's in your packet too, and it also goes on the, the computer-based, uh, timeline as well, which is a little earlier. So, um, there's a slide in there that I just want to draw your attention to, um, in terms of minimum number of devices. And it really comes down to a recommendation from the DESC that they're really looking at one device per student for the largest grade tested, and one device per student for the two largest grades tested, so, which would mean a considerable upgrade to the Milford technology infrastructure, as well as the other seventy-two percent of schools that are kind of in a similar position that we're in.
So, just so I get some,
Yep.
just so we can do some math on this. How many devices do we, could we currently serve, and what would that mean from an up, from a total number of additions?
You know, I could probably bring that to you at the next, at the next meeting. I don't have that right in front of you, but it's, it's a, it's a pretty big jump
Fair enough. Yeah.
in terms of what we have available right now.
It's hundreds, I'm guessing.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's a significant jump, and it's probably something we'd have to phase in over a number of years.
Okay.
Um, would, would be my best guess at this point.
That's fair, that's fine.
When we talk about devices, we're talking about laptops or desktops? Are we talking about iPads?
I don't know, something eleven inches or bigger.
Right.
Because nine-inch, uh, tablets or something like that won't, won't, you won't be able to see the full screen.
Okay, yeah. So pretty much you're on the desktops.
And some people have had issues even with, um,
Laptop or desktop, yeah.
some devices that were approved this year, just seeing the full questionnaire, being able to scroll on the screen. And so, there's been some feedback from districts across the state that have tried like, and I'm, I don't want to quote devices, because I can't remember specifically what they're talking about, but there were some devices that even had that eleven-inch screen, that there were some issues with kind of seeing the question or. and I'm, I don't wanna quote devices, cause I can't remember specifically what they're talking about, but there were some devices that even had that eleven inch screen, that there were some issues with kind of seeing the question or some functionality attached to it. So, again, park is a times, a time test, we can administer computer-based and/or paper-based tests. Um, and again, there's additional supports and accommodations similar to what there are for MCAS for students with disabilities and um ELL students. MCAS alt students, um, who need an alternate assessment in two thousand fifteen, there's, there wasn't a clear answer on that at our last meeting, I think they're going in the direction of sticking with MCAS for the alt students, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, so I don't wanna say that's definitely the direction the state's going in. In terms of accountability, schools administering park will have their two thousand fifteen accountability and assistance level held harmless, so you can go up, stay the same, but you can't go down. Um, schools administering MCAS will be classified into a level as usual and will, and will not be held harmless. And so, here, here are my recommendations for um, for Milford, for in, for next year, and I think we're gonna have to take another vote next year as well, because I think the, the game might change a little bit. Is, I'd like to recommend uh grades three through eight for park, paper and pencil. Um, exclude grade nine and eleven students from park testing during the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year, and revisit the decision for the fifteen, sixteen school year, and again, a lot of that's gonna depend on where the competi- competency determination discussion is going, because I'd love to have the kids practice for a year, not next year, but the following year, in ninth grade, to have an opportunity for the tenth grade tests. Uh, students in grade ten will continue to take MCAS for graduation requirement and ELA in math, and then again, all science tests will remain MCAS, including the science requirement for graduation. And the rationale for this is really, this will allow students and teachers to engage in the park tests while having no impact on accountability. Um, we don't currently have the technology infrastructure to kind of manage the, the, the uh online version of the test, and based on some of the issues that occurred um across the state, I'd be hesitant to jump in on the first round with the online testing. Um, even, even if we just did a percentage of our students. And then, again, taking the park test during the fourteen, fifteen school year will allow us to analyze a year's worth of data, when the accountability measures will potentially kick back in during the fifteen, sixteen year. And if for some reason the state does go to like an MCAS plus or smarter bounds or some other version, I feel very comfortable with our ability to jump back into MCAS plus or into smarter bounds, but if we're going park full on, then this gives us a year to kind of, the, 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 the commissioner calls it the second year of the test drive, but it gives us a chance to kind of test drive the, the testing vehicle before, you know, before the accountability kicks in, and it gives teachers and students a real chance to react to it, because it was a different experience, even for the students taking the paper and pencil version of the test than MCAS, because the way they're asking questions, the synthesizing of information is, is, is just different. I think the students are ready for it, but it's just a different way of testing, and it will take a little calibration from the students and the teachers to go through it, I think, once or twice, similar to when we did MCAS, it took four or five years for people to really get that, that under their belt.
Okay. So, uh, recommendation is three through eight, paper and pencil, park.
Correct.
Nine and ten, we exclude from park, continue on MCAS.
Nine, nine, and eleven.
Sorry, nine, nine, ten, and eleven, we exclude from MCAS, continue on, uh, I'm sorry, we exclude from park and continue on MCAS.
Correct.
Um, and obviously, we follow the, the model with science and, and ELA.
Correct.
Okay?
Correct.
Um, any other question, any questions from the committee?
Sure.
Okay.
First of all, thank you, because it's dizzying to go through all of this and make sense of it, and actually, you did somehow. Um, I guess one of the questions that I have, and I thought originally when we talked about this the last time, I thought absolutely it was going to be, let's go with park, because that seems to be the direction we're going in.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And I think what I'm finding a challenge is that the data that's been presented to us so far is about people's feelings about the test, and we don't have any data yet on student performance, if it is valid, if it is a fair measure,
Mm-hmm. Correct.
um, if it is appropriate for our students. And I guess one of the questions that I still have, and personally, I probably isn't gonna be a very PC thing to say, but the dis- I think the decision really should fall in the hands of the people who are in the schools, um, and I'm in a unique position sitting in both roles.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I, personally, I'm worried about the burden on the schools, because right now, it looks like we'll be administering park twi- park twice, cause you're gonna do the mid-year or the end year, plus you've got to administer the MCAS for science at all grade levels, because there's no other option.
Just for five, grade five and eight?
Five and eight, so when you look at a school like a, a Woodland, Noah, Stacy, they'd be administering MCAS and park, and possibly MCAS alt for kids who need that.
Mm-hmm. Which they, would, yeah, so the, MCAS all has been happening all along anyways.
Right.
And the only, the only difference in terms of administration would be, um, I think the time, the actual time out of class would be, and again, we haven't been through it yet, so it's hard to, it's hard to really say, but I think it's gonna be similar, because instead of having kind of the full day testing situation.
Right. Yeah.
You're really having like an hour and a half session, an hour and a half session, and then six weeks later, give or take, an hour and a half session and an hour and a half session.
Right, and yet, interestingly, we don't know the impact of the number of teachers that said they think their kids could have used more time, we don't know what those kids, what the impact on their scores would be, even though I understand we're being held harmless.
Correct.
Um, I guess I'm just curious about what you would see would be the detriment of sticking with MCAS and allowing kids to have experiences with park-like questions in the regular classroom, h- how you balance go- making this big shift, because it will be, it will be a burden on the buildings, because it's just so different, and that whole, the whole administration piece of MCAS, it just shuts down a building.
A- absolutely.
And with park, it'll be shutting down a building for something you haven't really done before.
Right.
So, it's, so I'm just curious what would be the detriment of waiting till we get more data.
So, I think that, I think the detriment to wa- eh, I think the detriment to waiting till we get more data is that this'll give us an opportunity to actually go through the process and still be held harmless, and it'll give students an actual, I think there's a difference between asking um, or park questions in class, or the, and there's only, there's only gonna be a limited number of actual park questions that are gonna be released.
Right.
Because they're still compiling the questions they're gonna use for the, you know, the first couple of rounds of the tests. Um, cause I, eh, cause I think the more experienced you get with something, I think the better it is for everybody, and I'd rather have us go through the process where there's, there's no accountability on the line necessarily once.
Right.
And have an opportunity to do it a second, you know, the second time, we're kind of, we've had that experience, we've got the information, and we can, we can kind of jump into it, and that, that's really, that's really what dri- what's driving my decision, cause I feel like if we,
Feel better about it.
Is the.
Okay.
if we go with MCAS and it stays MCAS, which is, you know, I think it, it's a small possibility, but it's definitely a possibility.
Right.
I think we could jump back into that, but if it goes park and stays park.
Mm-hmm.
Then we have that one year of real experience taking the test, rather than when accountability is on the line, and it's a real high stakes, and it's the first time we're doing it.
And it's your concern that if we wait, um, that next year the state says, yeah, we're going park and now it counts, and we won't have that year?
Correct.
We won't have that.
Right, and that's really, that's really what's kind of driving the decision, and that's, and again, I don't think there's, I don't think anybody, I don't, if we were to poll people in the district, I don't think we'd get a hundred percent,
And that's.
but I think teachers and principals would appreciate having that opportunity to kind of go through the process, and again, it is a burden, cause it's new, it's another new thing, but.
And it doesn't right or wrong either, I think it's a really, really tough decision, and you've got a lot of kids, um, never mind the anxiety and how challenging it is for kids and people administering it, so.
No, 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 no. No. But, yeah, but in terms of a risk assessment, I think there's a higher risk of not jumping in than jumping in.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Because I think we can always go back to, eh, you know, whatever, whatever it becomes, but if it, but if it is park going forward, which it's kind of leaning in that direction, but again, you never know.
True. True. Mm-hmm.
But we, we get that one year of really digging into it, and regardless, we're still um engaging in those two thousand ten ELA and math standards, so for whatever the assessment is, but if it is going park, we have that one year of really going through that process.
Okay.
But Don, if, if, if I may, I'm sorry, Jen, if, if MCAS is not broken, why is the state looking to change?
It's, it's a, it's a gr- it's a great question, and tha- and that's one of the things being debated at the st- at the state level, um, at the board of education level, and I, and I can't remember the board member who raised that question. Um, I think the goal was really to have a tool that reflected those two thousand ten standards, which the MCAS was slowly evolving into.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a higher percentage of questions kind of each year over the last couple of years, we're, we're reflecting those two thousand ten standards.
But to Jen's point, and not, I'm sorry to cut you off, but to, to Jen's point is, we have a group of students that we've kind of got into this path of
No, 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 no.
taking MCAS and how you take the MCAS, and now all of a sudden, we're shifting away from that, and I think, I agree with you, I think the anxiety level is, is gonna be awful, you know? I, I agree with you being ahead of the curve, I'm with you there, but I'm saying to myself, but if the MCAS testing is, is working and isn't broken, then
Yep. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right.
why are we looking to make this change?
And that's really the, the big questions that are getting bantered about all over the country right now.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah.
One of the, one of the advantages of going online, um, eventually, and again, I, I wouldn't recommend that here, probably this year or next year, um, is that you get immediate feedback, and the idea being that teachers can use that, that data to kind of impact their instruction before the end of the year tests.
So, I think.
That's re- that's really some of the thinking behind it, and then you also get a kind of a more national comparison, where we can kind of look at how we're doing compared to like, um, some of the other states that might be in the park consortium now, but it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison, where this would be, it would give you a broader sense of how you're doing compared to the rest of the states in the country. Um, theoretically, there's bigger opportu- there's greater opportunities to kind of collaborate or come up with, you know, processes to kind of address, um, you know, whatever, whatever issues you're seeing, whatever we, you know, perceived weaknesses there are.
Okay. Any other questions from the, from the committee? Alright, so, uh, if it, so please, as the committee, we would need to have a motion, if we're gonna make, take a vote, so we do, we would need a motion from the committee. Do I have a motion? Motion from Don, do I have a second? Second from Joey, uh, all in favor of uh, of uh, Dr. McIntyre's proposal of uh, paper-based for three to eight, uh, exclu- exclusion of park, uh, for park, um, exclusion of park for grades nine through eleven, um, and obviously following the state standard for ELS and, and uh, uh, math. All in favor?
Passes. Alright.
Thank you, Dr. McIntyre. Uh, second piece you have for us tonight?
So, the second piece is, um, uh, at the last meeting, uh, we talked about, um, students being pulled from gym classes at the elementary level for, um, strings, uh, performance, and I, I did a little research on this to get a, a little background to the committee on kind of how this happened and kind of what the genesis of it was, and it's been in place for a few years, and basically, um, there's, it's, it's tricky generally, um, for instrumental music, uh, programs within the school, because kids, like, you don't have a class of kids taking like instrumental music, so schools do it in a lot of different ways, and, and the selection that was made a few years ago, um, was to, instead of pulling a student from one of the core academic courses of English, social studies, science, or math, they selected the PE classes, because students take two PE classes per week, so it wouldn't exclude a student from art or any of the other specialists that meet once per week. So, that was really the rationale behind that decision. Um, Don shared with me a policy, um, that outlined that, um, students at the elementary level would take two PE classes per week. And so, one of the things we need to figure out, um, as, as kind of a district or from a policy perspective, is, you know, how are we gonna manage this process, because you don't really wanna pit the musicians against, you know, the, the PE, you know, the music versus the PE department, but you really wanna look at what's, what's the best way to kind of manage a program that, um, if anybody saw the, um, senior presentation, or the senior night, uh, presentation, there was a great strings performance by a couple of students, um, so you, just in that moment, and then a few concerts during the year, you saw a real value to the program. So, you've got a very valuable program in instrumental music, you've got a very valuable program in PE, how do you, how do you balance that with the needs of English, social studies, science, um, math, art? Um, you know, we're gonna have to look at keyboarding at some point because of the park testing, um, so there's a lot of competing. So, I think one of the things we need to do is kind of go back, and I need to meet with, um, some of the CTLs connected to this, um, for music and for, um, PE, the building administration, and kind of talk about what kind of makes sense, and then come back with a, with a recommendation for, for the committee. Um, in terms of whether it's a policy recommendation, whether it's a, um, you know, a shift of where we pull kids from, whether it's a new way to do it, um, which are kind of the three options that are on the table right now, so we've either gotta, you know, look at that policy, we can look at the schedule, or we can maybe look at even a different way of doing it potentially. And again, I think we need to really sit down and look at the mechanics of the schedule to do that.
Okay.
And those are really the three options that I see kind of going forward.
My understanding is that in the fourth grade, it is, it is a third grade exclusive issue, with the students being, coming out of a gym class, it is fourth grade, they are able to do it during their music class.
Correct.
Um.
So, it's, it may be possible to schedule it that way, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure, I wasn't able to get kind of a, because there's a lot of factors, whenever you look at a schedule, there's a lot of factors, and if you switch one thing, it has a lot of unintended consequences.
Absolutely. Okay. Um, Don, I know that you had brought that up, but I don't wanna exclude anyone, anyone have any questions or a- around that? Okay.
I was prepared to talk about this and the whole business, so would you prefer me to wait and?
Who's brought up now, so if you have questions for Dr. McIntyre?
Um.
Feel free.
No, I don't have, I, I don't have questions for Dr. McIntyre.
Correct.
I don't.
Alright, so the next steps for you, Dr. McIntyre, would then be?
To meet with the building principal, to meet with the CTL, the curriculum team leaders, and really kind of talk about what is, what some, what some potential options are.
Okay. Okay.
And at this point, I don't even have, like with park, it used to give you a percentage, I don't, I don't necessarily know where this is gonna go, because
Yeah.
without looking at the mechanics of the schedule and looking at some other factors, um, it's hard for me to make, like, even to say I'm, I'm leaning in one direction or another.
It's fine, I, I think part of the concerns that I, if I remember correctly, from the, uh, from that meeting was combination of, um, I, I think some, uh, not just as you brought up our, some of our policy, um, but also, uh, with regards to some, some, uh, some state regulations as well, that regulate number of hours required for gym class. Um, and that there's a potential that we may be in violation of that, um, based on for at least some portion of the students as a result of that, and if that's the case.
And we can, we can definitely look into that, too.
Yeah, so I would, my, my ask would just be the, the, the more swiftly we can address that.
Ab- absolutely.
If, if it's, if it's our own policy, that's a problem, if it's a state law, it's a gigantic problem.
And I, I think it's definitely, I mean, it's definitely a local policy issue, I'm not sure it contravenes the, the state policy.
So, the quicker, the better. Yep. Yeah, if you could, so the, the, the quicker we could move to that, the, the certainly the better on that, just, you know, where there's, there's, you know, I, I don't think a day goes by without an article in the newspaper
Yep. Absolutely, absolutely.
around, uh, or on the news, talking about, uh, the health and, and well-being of, of children, and, uh, I've, as, as somebody who's been involved in music my entire life, I certainly see the value in that, and having a son who's in the strings program, and has been since third grade, uh, I certainly definitely see the value in it.
Mm-hmm. A- absolutely.
Um, that being said, we've got a, we've got a huge obesity issue in this country, and I, I wanna make, the last thing I would ever wanna be is a member of a school committee member, as, or a parent, in a town that's playing any role in that.
Mm-hmm, great.
Okay. So, that being said, thank you, Dr. McIntyre, we will move forward on to subcommittee updates. Um, our next item on the agenda is athletic subcommittee, so we've got, uh, uh, Joey and Don, and did, did this, uh, committee have an opportunity to meet?
Yeah, we actually met, uh, this week, we had, um, some good news regarding the program for the junior high, and that was Nancy did find two coaches to step forward
Great.
for the program, for the boys and the girls program, so I was really excited about that, um.
Mil- Milford teachers, too.
Yeah, two Milford teachers.
I'm sorry, that was my next question, so.
In town. In town.
And so, the one thing for Bob would be to reach out to Nancy, find out who those two individuals are, work with the two principals, make sure that they can, if there's a way to create a flexible schedule for term one, to ensure that they can get their, uh, practices on time, which I don't think should be difficult, cause it sounded like each day is gonna start at three thirty. Um, it starts after Labor Day, and it's only a five-week program, um, so, anyway, that, that's the time that we're looking for. Uh, Thursday, Richie's going down to the school, um, a week from today, or was it today?
Mm-hmm, yep, week from, now he's gonna go down next week.
I think it's a week from today. Uh, he's going down to recruit, um, athletes, uh, to participate in the program, so he'll respond back to us with an email, let us know what, uh, the numbers look like, and make sure that we can support the program with kids.
Yeah.
Um, and that was, that was really it, I mean, it was just a short, quick, easy meeting, um.
It, it, it was good, I mean, uh, the other meetings that we had leading up to this, and like that meeting we had last night, it was like literally ten, fifteen minute meeting, cause we got everything we talked about prior accomplished, and we got the coaches, we got a schedule, you know, we got everything together, so it went, it's going pretty well, for this aspect, to get the soccer going, too.
Yeah. Yeah, the other thing that we were asked to do was the budget, which we understand what the budget is, and we've reported that back to the committee, the need for policies, which we've handed over to the policy subcommittee. The only thing that we have in question right now is who's gonna be responsible, does it fall under Richie? Cause Richie's, you know, def- you know, his, his, uh, uh, I, I don't know what you wanna call it, but it, you know, the territory that he covers is the high school, it's not the middle school, so would we need to expand, uh, his duties? Uh, by law, I believe it falls under the principals, so is that one principal, two principals, it's a seventh, eighth program, um, so, I think we just need to see how some things. Um, so I think we just need to see how some things, uh, iron out. And then we can come back with some recommendations on that, um, maybe even if it's a interim solution for the first year. So I think that's the last remaining agenda item really that we have to work on.
And, and within that five week, I didn't know if you mentioned, it's fourteen games within that five-week program.
Oh, okay. That's a little better. I was like fourteen games? Oh my gosh.
And, and I did take, I did take an action item to reach out to, uh, Jimmy Asim. To make sure that we connect him with those two coaches, to make sure that they're in line with his program. So it's a nice transition for these kids coming from the junior high up to the high school.
Just for the benefit of the viewing public, Jimmy Asim is our high school, is our, is one of our high school soccer coaches?
Yeah, head coach. That's it.
Thanks. Alright, uh, policy subcommittee. I know you guys have been very busy. We've already seen some of your body of work. Um, any other updates that you have or recommendations for the committee this evening?
Um, so we, we did meet on, on Mondays, we mentioned earlier, um, we, we do have a, a calendar that's been posted. We're meeting the second Monday of every month over the course of the next year and then we'll add meetings as, as, as needed, but at least we have a schedule in place to, um, review the, the policies on a regular basis. Um, we touched on the athletic field policy today. Again, more to, more to come there. Um, we approved the school communication program. Um, Donnie touched on the, um, athletic policy and the middle school sports. As I mentioned earlier, that's something that we're reviewing in, in detail right now, working with Richie um, as well as the, the high school principal. So more, more to come on that piece. Um, I do have, eh, the, the other policy is the cell phone policy, so I do have a clarifying question. Um, so today, there is no policy, right? It's in, we leave it in the hands of each individual schools to put in their handbook. So if there is no policy, is there something that the policy subcommittee needs to review and present to the committee to vote on?
No, it'd just be a recommendation.
So reckon, even though there's nothing there?
Yep, you just said we reviewed it, we recommend that we keep it as is. And then the committee would then say, yep, we agree, or no, we wanna change that.
Okay.
That'd be it.
Alright, so the other policy that we looked at, and I guess this might be a similar situation, is the bullying policy. And, and I know Bob met with Jerry Moody to see if any changes need to be made there and um, Jerry's recommendation was that at the moment, our policy is in compliance. There are no changes that need to be made. Obviously, there's some legislative, um, language that, that's pending that may change that down the road. At some point, we'll have to revisit that and make some changes. But today, there's really nothing that needs to be done to the committee. So do we need to because we reviewed it, do we need to bring that to the school committee and say, we reviewed it, nothing needs to be changed?
Yep, so exactly through the updates that you're doing, good, great, all great questions. So, um, through these updates at these meetings, that you do exactly what you're doing, which is we reviewed it, this is what our steps have been. Um, at this time, we, there's no recommended action. And we say thank you and then we move on. That's it. Yeah, no, you did exactly, you're right on the right path.
Alright.
Don has a question.
Before you bring the bullying policy to us, uh, the one thing I'd like you to look into is that the bullying laws state that bullying has to be a repetitive situation. So if I take a kid and throw him up against a locker and threaten him, that's not bullying. If I do it twice, it's bullying. I have no problem and I know I would personally love to see us have a stricter language around that. And possibly if it is, and you can ask Jerry, if it's possible to eliminate the repeat piece. Because, uh, we've had situations in this school and where people thought it was bullying. When it came down to the law as written, uh, we really couldn't do anything because of that word, repeat. So if there's a possibility to strike that into, from our policies, so that we have a stronger stance against kids that are bullying, uh, that would be my recommendation. I don't know if it's possible, talk to Jerry, but that's what I'd like to say.
Yeah, if you guys would re- if you would review that and, and give recommendations on that, um, and then ultimately we can go through that. And actually, I, I think it's with some of the executive orders, cause I know there's certainly, to Joe's point, there's some legislative changes. Uh, there was an executive order that was changed, that was or, that was signed, uh, so it didn't even go through the legislature. That, uh, Governor, uh, Governor Patrick did put into change. I'm glad to see that Jerry did review that. Um, we definitely wanna make sure we just keep our eyes open on that one too, as things come through.
So we're not caught off guard.
Excellent. Any other updates from the policy subcommittee?
Yeah, the only other update, um, you know, based on the comments, uh, that Kevin made, we'll obviously look at the wellness policy as well and we'll add that as an agenda item.
Okay.
Could, w- w- um, one question, um, w- we still dealing with the lice policy or is that all done?
We, we are, so I-
I don't remember hearing about it, that's all. Cause I know someone's gonna ask me about it, so.
Right, yeah, so I know Bo- Bob met with Judy on that. We're having some additional conversations, so we, we don't have anything to present to the committee at this point, but it's, uh, some point down the road.
Cool.
Thank you. Alright, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is new business. Any member have any new business? Moving on to the next agenda item. Um, any members have any old business? Don?
So, um, a- as I mentioned during Kevin's, um, piece, that I, I was gonna hold this to old business, but um, you know, the, uh, what I really wanna focus on is communication and accountability. Okay? Uh, the last meeting, I did ask you to look into the, to the strings program, that's true. My main concern was the seventy-five kids that are being pulled out of gym, um, that's in violation of our, um, our policies. But I believe the numbers that were given me were two hundred. So there's another hundred and twenty-five kids being pulled out of other classes. I don't think it's all music. Um, I think it may be other classes, art, or maybe other curriculum. The, the big reason why I brought this up is that we're not meeting our curriculum uh, levels and, and expectations, which to me is extremely alarming. So I'm gonna start off by, and, and I apologize upfront for taking some time here, uh, so bear with me, but now the school committee's power and duties, um, policy file BBA says there's a few points, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but our role is to create, abolish, modify, and maintain such positions. Schools, divisions, and clas- classifications as may be necessary for the efficient administration of the educational system. It's to consider, adopt, and annual, and adopt an annual budget. Keep the citizenry intelligently informed of, uh, purposes, values, conditions, and needs of the public education in Milford. It also says, the committee shall expect the superintendent of schools to recommend policies for adoption and administer policies and enact by the committee, enacted by the committee. So I wanna start off by saying, I am not trying to eliminate the strings program. I think it's a wonderful program. Uh, I, I th- I was there. I saw Mr. Bay and Ms. White do that performance to all of us. We, we, it was a standing O at the end. And of course, I mean, that program had a lot to do with the talent that was presented in front of us. So I wanna make it very clear. Cause I know how things get twisted in the press and I know how Ed Thompson's gonna play this, but I am not trying to get rid of the wellness program at all. Okay? What I'm trying to do is make sure that we are following the policies that we have pl- in place and have been set in place and voted on by the school committee. Okay? So we're in violation of our own policy. Um, I, I'm concerned about this. I was concerned that our director is only teaching two classes. The rest of her time is independent studies. In her stipends that she receives, it says, and I quote, shall be in consideration for teaching three classes per day. She, she has a lot of stipends. And two of them are for director positions, art and music, which are separated. So she's actually getting doubled up on that. So I, my interpretation would be six classes, not three. So she's teaching two, they're in, the rest of her time is independent studies. So if that's the case, I'd like an explanation as to what the independent studies are. I wanna know who the students are in that, those classes, and I wanna know what their grades are from being in those classes. I also brought up in the last meeting, the BMI situation. There is a report somewhere in this school about how bet- poorly Milford has done in pu- um, regards to BMI. Which you can sit there and say, maybe we should change our policy to allow kids to leave gym. But if that policy was present, um, the results of that were presented to us like they should be in a timely manner, I don't think that would be the position. So the other piece is, um, our policy, uh, we have a policy implication, um, policy called, uh, File CA. You can look all of these up. The school committee policy accepts the concept of the school committee as the policymaking party in the school administration, as the responsible parties for the implementation of these policies. So the administration's responsible for driving these, alright? Now, I brought these up three weeks ago. And to me, as a school committee member, I, I can't believe that I didn't get any response until twelve minutes ago. Alright, this was brought up three weeks ago. When I'm bringing up the fact that we're violating a school policy and nothing's done and I'm not communicated with, uh, when I brought it up on TV, I, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm wondering what I'm doing here. Cause again, reading my powers and duties, this is what I'm trying to accomplish. So I'm gonna bring up to speed on what I found out over the last three weeks. The student wellness policy filed JL. It talks about Milford School employees, uh, physical education teachers needing to be certified, physical education teachers, PK through twelve. In it, it states, and again, I, I stated this three weeks ago, Milford Public School Physical Education Program shall require that preschool students shall receive no less than thirty minutes per week of physical education taught by a certified instructor. Elementary grade students K through four shall receive no less than two forty minutes of physical education per week taught by a certified instructor. Middle school students in grades five through eight shall receive no less than two classes per week of physical education taught by a certified instructor. High school students will be required to participate in one per semester of physical education per school year. No waivers allowed. Okay? These are requirements set by this committee for this administration to follow. In addition to that, there is a Massachusetts state law, chapter seventy-one, section three, in which it states, physical education shall be taught as a required subject in all grades for all students in the public schools. Okay? The other thing that we heard tonight is, uh, Mr. Trembley's recommendations of after-school programs such as robotics, foreign language. I wanna point out that the strings program is an enrichment program. And again, I'm not trying to crush it, trying to find a place for it. And in my opinion, it's after school, like these other enrichment programs. Not disrupting curriculum courses, breaking a state law, and violating our policies. Okay? Now, I brought this up three weeks ago. Alright, so maybe that would have been efficient. But in my investigations, and I'll pass these out when I'm done. This is a letter dated June seventh, two years ago, two thousand and twelve, from Mrs. Angelini. Uh, I'm sorry, to Mrs. Angelini, from David Chaplin, CTL for physical education, in copy, Robert Trembley and Mr. Michael Tempesta. States that the purpose of this letter is to respectfully express the concerns of the fifth through twelfth grade educational, educational staff of the Milford Public Schools regarding the recent reduction enforced to the physical education staff at the Stacy School. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but again, I'll pass this around. Limiting the staff at Stacy may lead to serious safety issues regarding supervision in locker rooms as well as in the gym and on the fields. Class size will certainly increase to unsafe levels. Hum- um, Human Performance Lab, a fitness center geared to the development and advancement of cardiovascular and muscular fitness, um, the facility designed to accommodate twenty students will be greatly limited or perhaps even rendered obsolete. In closing, uh, I'm sorry, uh, the la- the loss of staff during this time has had a regrettable, regrettable impact on the wellness and culture of the Stacy School. Should also be noted that in the past ten years, without a significant change in enrollment at Stacy School, the PE staff has had to render reductions, uh, has been reduced three times. From four, down to three and a half, to three, and most recently now to two teachers. In closing, it is in the hopes of the five through twelve physical education department that the district as soon as possible find a way to reinstate the physical education position at Stacy. This will go a long way to reaching the goal set forth in the Milford Daily News as reported in the June fifth edition. Again, this is two thousand and twelve. Milford wants to stamp out child obesity. I have another document here, dated June fourth, two thousand thirteen. This is a year ago. Okay? This is the year-end report of the wellness committee. In which it's complaints about the conditions of the locker rooms. I'm not gonna get into the details. But the most alarming thing is, please note that this locker and shower area is unsupervised. The PE locker room showers are inoperable and shut off at the source. Staff cuts continue to make two major important components of the sta- uh, Stacy facility to go unused, the climbing wall and human performance lab. Scheduling continues to stress the class size. And as such, students-teacher ratio is not compliant with the district plan. Guidance needs to better coordinate with the fine arts classes to assure that PE class enrollments conform to these guidelines. The other thing that I'd like to point out is that because of those oversized classrooms, uh, we have kids in PE at Stacy ranging from twenty-six to thirty-seven or thirty-eight kids per class, per teacher. So again, we're trying to keep it to twenty-five or below, and now I know it's phys ed and of course it can, um, increase more than that. But thirty-seven is pretty alarming. The other thing is when they are overfilled, we're sending down a teacher assistant. That person is not certified, so again, we're in violation of our wellness policy. Um, the other, uh, piece to this is the safety concern. And I mentioned this again, three weeks ago. Again, here we are, haven't heard anything back. That my major concern at the Stacy School was the fact that we have two teachers trying to cover two locker rooms, a gym, or a field. You can't be in two places more than once. It's inadequate and we're, we're sitting on a disaster waiting to happen which has been highlighted and brought to the administration's, uh, attention, not just by me, three weeks ago, but two years ago, uh, last year as well as two years ago. Okay? So, a- again, I dig deeper, I find another, uh, policy that I'd like to read. And this is the school committee superintendent relationship file BDD, in which it states, the superintendent will assist the committee in sound judgments and establishing policies and will place before the committee all relevant facts, information, and reports necessary to keep the committee adequately informed of situ- um, situations or business at hand. So my point is that did not happen. And Bob, I hate to say it, you failed. Because this is the type of information, based on my duties and responsibilities of a school committee member, when I should be looking at safety concerns, I should be looking at budgets. And if somebody's asking for additional teachers, that should be brought to me. I've never been asked in two years of sitting in the budget meetings to add a, add a gym teacher. Although that's the recommendation of the staff. I, the safety concerns were not brought to my attention. Um, the, you know, the, the, the entire violation of the school policy, I, you know, again, that isn't something I wanted fixed three weeks ago. That's not something I want fixed at the end of the year. That's something I want fixed today. This is some, actually, I wanted it fixed three weeks ago when I mentioned it, but nothing's happened. So what's, what's the goal? Is it to wait for the end of the year, for it to disappear and go away? I don't know. But I'm telling you right now, if I did the- But I'm telling you right now, if I did these things in my job and I failed to inform my boss and I failed to do my job, I'd be terminated. Now, I'm not gonna suggest that we terminate you, Bob, but I wouldn't mind making a motion of suspending you for a time. So that you can focus on this and get this thing completed. Not three weeks from now, not two weeks from now. But I, I find it very alarming that we're in violation of a state law, our policies. And it wasn't taken serious enough, in my opinion, that nothing was communicated to me within that three-week period.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in. Um. There's a motion that's made, been made. I am not gonna ask for a second. I'm gonna table the discussion as well as the motion. Um, Bob, I'm gonna give you time to, um, formulate and write a response. I'm not looking for a response from you right now. Um, I'd like for you to write up, do a written response, please, um, and provide it to me as well as this committee. Prepare that for the next school committee meeting, which is two weeks from this evening. Um, during which time, this will give me the opportunity to, um, review, it'll give us the opportunity to review that and have that discussion. As well as, um, review, um, you know, just to make sure that we understand exactly what the implications. Um, without knowing, obviously, the letter of the law. It'll give me an opportunity as chair to, uh, um, connect with town council, just to understand what those implications are. Um, if there is a, if there is, uh, a, a favor or vote from this committee to pursue any, pursue any disciplinary action. So, that being said, and, and making sure there were not any contract violations. So I'm gonna ask for two weeks for you to take a, take a look at that and s- make sure that by this next meeting, we have in writing. Your response to the, to the pieces that Donnie just brought out. Um, and I will table discussion from here. That being said, um, we move, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is, uh.
Can I ask whether we're tabling the discussion? Because I'm, I'm very confused right now.
Because there's Jared's wi- because there's Jared's within my purview.
I'm, uh.
So Jared with, it is within my purview?
I'm very confused and very, very frustrated by this conversation. And I'm very shocked that that's the way this committee is going to conduct ourselves tonight.
And.
With, with piles of paper, things that have been done positively in this district. And I appreciate that maybe we can't have a full discussion, but I am very, very concerned about the direction of this conversation here tonight.
And that's why, you know, in order to, um, give Bob an opportunity to respond. It gives us an opportunity in the, in the, in the interest of fairness to have an understanding and hear, um, from Bob as well. And not have to give a response back this evening. We're gonna have an opportu- we will ta- I'm gonna table the conversation as well as any motions. For two weeks from today, giving Bob the opportunity to have those come, to respond back.
I, 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 may I please add one more thing?
Uh, no, I'm, I, I'm gonna, I've, I've made, I've made the decision, we are gonna move on. Uh, if we do continue down this line, I would have to rule you out of order.
What I'm gonna say is the more we're giving someone to do, the be.
Jen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rule you out of order at this time. So I'm gonna ask that you please, please keep your comments to yourself. Thank you.
That's okay.
We move on to our next agenda item, which is, which would be a motion for adjournment. If I can have a motion for adjournment, please. We will be moving into executive session. Purposes of which would be for contract negotiations, to debate or conver- have these conversations and negotiations on. Kim would weaken our position. So we will not be returning. You do need a motion for adjournment, motion from Mike, second from Don, all in favor? Motion is passed. We will not be returning. Have a good evening. Thank you.